Meaning details, I'll just say that the study session is regarding continuation of outdoor commercial activities. And for council to provide preliminary direction regarding amendments to the Pacifica municipal code. To allow the continuation of outdoor commercial activities. City Clerk Coffee is going to give us some format and information on our format for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer. This meeting tonight is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone. Via the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at cityofpacifica.org/live. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item. When the mayor calls upon that item for public comment. For those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute. By calling your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the record. And we're provided to council members for those comments received by 4:00 PM today. The format of the meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
All right, very well. So we are going to have a presentation from Assistant City Manager and Planning Director Tina Wermeyer.
Good evening. I have some slides prepared and while the clerk is putting those up. I wanted to thank you, Mayor and Council. For the opportunity, I'm Tina Wermeyer, Assistant City Manager and Planning Director. As you stated previously, the purpose of this study session is to receive preliminary feedback from the council. As staff prepares to kick off an update to the municipal code related to outdoor, outdoor activities. And I need to get my presentation back. Went to full screen mode, there we go. And I'll wait for. You can go, yeah, that slide. There you go. Alright, in June of 2020, the city manager issued the, and the council ratified, an emergency. Order related to the operation of outdoor commercial activities in the public right-of-way and on private property during the period of local emergency due to COVID-19. This order was one of the first in the county to create a rapid and flexible permitting system for businesses to conduct. Activities outdoors in compliance with county and state health orders. And this program has enabled many businesses to survive the economic impacts of the pandemic. With the success and popularity of the program, the council expressed interest in considering modifications to the municipal code to capture features of the temporary emergency outdoor activities license program. Permanently into the future. And Pacifica is not alone in this. Many cities across the state are beginning to evaluate the future of outdoor dining and other activities post-pandemic. The state's order extending regulatory relief to such activities will extend through the end of this year. Therefore, council has directed that this issue receive early attention as part of the council work plan priority initiative to evaluate and implement economic development initiatives focused on business assistance. So in the next several slides, I'm going to cover the four areas or so of initial feedback needed from the council. And I'm going to do that by first providing a slide with some current contextual information. And then a slide with questions for the council. So what I suggest, so that the public can see that the questions council will get, that I review all the slides, allow for questions and public comment. And then we can go back and use that slide deck to, to go through each of the, the slides with questions for feedback, if that's okay with, with the mayor. So we can get council's direction. Next slide.
Mike has his hand up, just so you know.
I just wanted to comment, I'm not seeing the subtitles underneath for people that are hearing impaired. I don't know if Sarah needs to turn them on.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Thanks. Clerk, is that something you can handle from your end?
Yeah, I have those on, I'm just, I think I just need to consolidate screens. I'll do that while the presentation is ongoing.
Sarah, I've activated the mic.
Sorry, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first section is activities covered. The temporary outdoor activities license program known as OAL. Allows businesses to utilize the public right-of-way to conduct commercial activities in street parking areas known as parklets and on sidewalks where the width allows. The outdoor activities license is currently silent on use of these spaces by the public regardless of whether the person is patronizing the associated business. And currently, I believe most, if not all, parklets in Pacifica are managed as an area dedicated to the sole use of the associated business. Some jurisdictions require that seating areas in the right-of-way be available for use by the public. And in some instances, regulate, they have adopted regulations that prohibit table service in the parklets. And in this way, the right-of-way areas are sponsored and maintained by the neighboring business, but anyone may sit in the space without exclusion. And parklets do reduce the availability of on-street parking spaces. And on-private property, outdoor activity uses have varied to include outdoor fitness and limited-duration cultural or family entertainment events. While in the right-of-way, the primary use has been related to, to dining, drinking and dining uses. Next slide. So the feedback we would like to receive would be, should the permanent ordinance include use of the right-of-way or focus only on private property? If use of the right-of-way is supported, should the permanent ordinance include parklets or focus on wide enough sidewalks? Should use of the right-of-way in parklets or on sidewalks be available for the sole use of an adjacent business, or should these areas be available to non-customers? And should the permanent ordinance focus on dining, eating and drinking establishments, or allow other, allow other uses? Or would the council like to differentiate between private and right-of-way locations? Or type, type of use? Next slide. So the next major area is the permitting process. So currently, under our rating, this is not the outdoor, the special temporary outdoor activities license under COVID. This is just the municipal code as it is written now. Outdoor commercial uses in a commercial zone may be allowed on private property only with approval of a use permit. A use permit is a discretionary action, requires a public hearing, requires notification to neighboring property owners and residents. Requires that the applicant pay for staff time and materials to process the application and is appealable. So business owners may consider this process time-consuming and costly. On the other hand. Usement, the use permit process provides an opportunity for community input on specific applications. The current process that I just described would also include review of a coastal development permit if the business was also located in a coastal zone. Next slide. So on process, the feedback requested is should outdoor activities continue to require use permit or be ministerial approval? With ministerial approvals, staff confirms compliance with adopted regulations and can approve the permit without a public hearing. That, that may or may not be able to be applied in the coastal zone depending on whether or not an LCP amendment is approved subject to Coastal Commission certification. Is a hybrid approach preferable? For example, staff level review with noticing. And a hearing would only be required if concerns are raised during the comment period. And, and then associated with permitting is fees and costs. And a use permit, the discretionary action would require deposit and payment of staff time and materials. For a ministerial or hybrid approach, staff would recommend a set fee to cover the anticipated costs. And we would ask that the council confirm the set fee approach if ministerial or hybrid permitting is preferred. Next slide. Entertainment. We will be doing community engagement after this feedback session. And we'll include discussion of outdoor entertainment and related impacts. Currently, the outdoor activity license program does not allow for amplification. Next slide. And so for entertainment, we're asking council if there's preliminary feedback. That the council would like to provide regarding entertainment activities such as distance sensitive uses. Amplification or limits on the days or hours of music. And should outdoor entertainment require notice and public hearing? So we could have a hybrid approach where if there's no entertainment, perhaps the council wants to adopt a ministerial process. But if there is outdoor entertainment with potential noise impacts, perhaps that is a public hearing process. Or should a threshold be established for when a hearing is required? Such as Friday and Saturday night music during certain hours, maybe that can be approved ministerially. And if there's going to be weekday music. If that turns out to be more sensitive, perhaps that would need a hearing before it's approved. Next slide. So the next slide deals with American Rescue Plan Act funding. This funding can be used to provide assistance to small businesses which could support. And enhance outdoor spaces for COVID-19 mitigation or to improve the built environment of the neighborhood. In, in providing assistance to small businesses, the city must design a program that responds to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19 and meets. The Treasury Department's requirements for such a program. So the business survey that was conducted is attached to the staff report. And concluded that a great many of the current businesses that have, have outdoor activity licenses would like to continue. With outdoor uses after pandemic is over. But once we asked if they would be able or willing to. Install a more permanent, or maybe. More permanent, more attractive seating areas, then they, they were a little bit hesitant, sounds like. They, some of them said, I'm not so sure then at that point. Although we didn't dive deeper into why that was, I think it's a reasonable conclusion that there was a concern potentially with the cost to, to do that. And so the questions for council is, does the council want to explore use of American Rescue Plan Act funding to support. Improvement of these outdoor activity areas, possibly by providing grants or loans to small businesses provided the guidelines can meet. Treasury guidelines can be met by, met by our program. Next slide. So to assist with council's discussion, we wanted to share some feedback regarding outdoor activities that we've received. Anecdotally, comments from residents and the general public have been on the whole positive. We have received complaints covering a broad range of topics that you would. Assume perhaps with outdoor activities, including parking and delivery impacts on neighboring businesses and their customers. Noise, litter, and accessibility and pedestrian safety. Next slide. So after receiving direction tonight, we can begin preparing for some community outreach on these topics. And then in the coming months, return to council for more detailed direction after getting feedback from the community. And then prepare, begin to prepare drafting and ordinance and the public hearing process associated with the ordinance adoption. Next slide. So that's the conclusion of the presentation. I'm available for questions and also, you know, encourage the council to let us know if there's other components that you, you wanted to provide feedback. That were not captured. And again, once. We're ready after a public comment, we can use the slide deck to go back through the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Wermeyer. So for public comment, let me just say we're accepting public comment on this topic. If you have comments on, on topics other than this topic, we are going to have our regular council meeting starting at 7:00 PM. And there will be an opportunity for open comment during that meeting. I am looking at our attendees and it appears that we have 20 attendees. I haven't any real way of knowing how many would wish to speak, except that I see one hand raised at this point. Given that this meeting needs to end in time for the beginning of our regular council meeting. I would ask that you raise your hand right now if you plan to speak. And we will address you in the order in which your hand is raised. Thankfully, Assistant. Program Manager Josh Montemayor can do that in the correct order. And that will help us in determining how many minutes we can give each speaker. Personally, I'm seeing three, six, seven, eight. Do you see eight people so far?
Yes.
Alright, and the last hand I saw go up was Peter Loeb. So why don't we say three minutes? And also looking at the clock, we're going to need to stop public comment after those 24 minutes have elapsed. Eight times three is 24, yes. Alright, thanks very much. Any further public comment on this topic, of course, can be addressed to council in writing. Alright, thank you.
Okay, great. So our first speaker this evening is Beth Lukey, followed by Rick Reese. Beth, you can go ahead and speak. You may now meet yourself and then speak.
Hello, members of the city council and staff. Thank you for, for this. And thank you very much for creating the emergency permit process in the first place. The entire process was actually pretty quick and easy. And I thank Joshua Montemayor for facilitating that. So thank you very much. I am very much, so I'm the owner of a grape in the fog in Rockaway. And I'm very much in support of continuing. The ability to have outdoor dining and entertainment. In our case, we have live music. And what we did was. We have a friend with a 48 Chevy truck and we would put the musicians on the back of the truck. And that would attract attention. People loved that. And it gave, you know, it gave some elevation for the musicians. And so just kind of a neat thing. Really, it really, the outdoor dining did save the wine bar. And just as importantly, it gave the community a way to gather in a safe place with some semblance of normality. I want to also, so I do very much hope that city council considers the ban on amplified, amplified music. There should, there is a more sort of scientific measurable way to determine sound levels. The way it is now, it, it's just, it's like all or nothing. So I, I would like you to consider that. And possibly like a decibel meter or just consider, put it into context, you know, if it's during the day and whatnot. And that actually leads me to pointing out that a grape in the fog is located in the Rockaway Beach redevelopment district, specifically designed for visitor-serving businesses. And I just want you to consider that, that first and foremost, I should be allowed to do things that are visitor-serving at the, in Rockaway. And, and that should be considered as far as parking goes. Has, have any of the businesses considered valet parking? Or I know I'm running out of time here. Just considering the fact that most of the businesses in Rockaway are not visitor-serving, that means if it was visitor-serving, we'd have probably many more cars. Potentially, if we were really rocking and rolling and visitor-serving. So that needs to be considered regardless. I think me taking three parking spaces is hardly, you know, a, a real, should be a concern. And yeah, anyway, I think that is it. Thank you very much for your time. I support outdoor dining continuing and. Live music. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Our next speaker is Rick Reese, followed by Raina Beach. Rick, you may now meet yourself.
Yeah, hi, this is Rick. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So if there's a silver lining to this pandemic, it's these outdoor spaces. People love them. I love them. They're great for the locals, also great for visitors. So I, I, I've been to Burlingame in San Francisco where they have lots of these outdoor spaces. One difference that I've noticed is that they seem to be a, a little more permanent already in some of these other cities. And I think that's important to our businesses here because we're weather-challenged, obviously, on the coast side here. And if the businesses have some certainty about these permits, it would allow them to invest a little more in more robust outdoor spaces. Making them a little more weather-friendly for all of us and more welcoming. So if you haven't seen what's been going on in Burlingame and San Francisco, I would encourage you to have a look. San Francisco's gone the extra mile of. Doing street closures like every other block on Valencia Street in the Mission District, which makes it very pedestrian-friendly. And the businesses can spread out in their parklets. It, it's just as, is very welcoming, as I said, and makes the whole experience of going out to eat or drink or listen to music just that much more enjoyable. And I don't see why Pacifica can't capitalize on that. We have a lot of visitors coming here now. When they see these outdoor spaces, I'm sure it just makes them want to come back. So my question for the council, and I, I hope you will address this at some point, is what, what are going to be, what are the major obstacles? To getting these outdoor permits permanent? It sounds like most of the council, if not all, were enthusiastically supporting the, the, making this permanent, which was good to hear. In the, in the last meeting that I saw about this. Mike O'Neill mentioned that the Coastal Commission might be an obstacle, and I'd, I'd like to know what, what, what we can do. Or what, what, what is the obstacle from the Coastal Commission and other obstacles? And what can I, as a citizen of Pacifica and an enthusiastic supporter of these businesses, what can I do to help? Get over these obstacles? And that's about all I have to say. Thanks for, for considering making these outdoor permits permanent. I hope it happens sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Our next speaker is Raina Beach, followed by Dawn Rowell. Raina, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Am I heard?
Yeah.
Wonderful. I also had the opportunity to sign up for the outdoor seating permit during the pandemic, which I truly am grateful for. That's helped a lot of businesses stay open and would have helped mine. Luckily, I did not have to go forward with using it. But I am a neighboring business with the Grape in the Fog. We actually have a shared patio. So the Grape in the Fog already has outdoor seating and now is taking up three spaces. Parking spaces in front of the business, which it is a wonderful thing to have outdoor seating and a business. I understand that. I don't understand why musical amplification is necessary within three parking spaces. I have a massage therapy business and I'm trying to create a relaxing space here. And now I have the shared patio and the sidewalk and the street in front of me with people drinking and having fun. And it is a beautiful thing. It's just horrible for my business, unfortunately. Mostly the amplified noise along with the setting up of all the metal fencing. People banging it as they're carrying it out, you know, all the stuff they store right outside of my door. So they can set up every day instead of having a storage place or, you know, another place to keep it. It's just kind of right here in our shared patio at my front entrance. And it's really been a burden on my business. There was a, a survey that went out asking the businesses how the outdoor seating has helped their business. But I did not see a survey for neighboring businesses asking how it has messed up their business or made things more, you know, complicated. And I want us all to survive, of course. But it's just been very difficult. I got a call from the business on the other side, the, the Realtor place. And the, the music truck is right in front of their business. And that's actually the only reason why I heard about this meeting this evening. And she gave me a call today to, to let me know. And so I, I don't think amplified. Music is necessary within three parking spaces for the neighboring businesses. I don't think it really has to be that loud. I hope that we can get surveys out to neighboring businesses to see how these outdoor seating areas have impacted their businesses positively or negatively. For me, it's been a negative. Not, it's been difficult, I'll put it that way. And so I look forward to hearing some more about this and how we're going to make a nice compromise, hopefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raina. Our next speaker is Dawn Rowell, followed by Sean Thompson. Dawn, you may now meet yourself.
Hi there, my name is Dawn, Donald Rowell, and I'm a musician who's played venues in Pacifica. But, and one of those has been Grape in the Fog since, since the COVID and since the city council has allowed outdoor dining and performances, I've been playing outside. And my, my main point, point that I wanted to make regarding live music for outdoor venues was that specifying as non-amplified is not really a very good measure of audio level. And I've had a career as, as an audio engineer, doing lots of things for music venues, including the Opera House in San Francisco. So I, I know a bit about this subject. And what I would suggest, rather than describing amplified versus not, non-amplified. If the object is to put a, a cap on how loud music can be, was to, to, to have a qualifier. And having done some research, I'd like to read just excerpts from letter that I sent to a couple of council members, the mayor and the mayor pro temp. So I suggest using a standard that San Francisco has adopted for outdoor music, which is that. The sound level will be measured at 10 dB A-weighted above the ambient noise level measured 25 feet from the source. And the, the map that the city of Pacifica has drafted to present to the state for sound levels. Measure the ambience background noise level between 65 and 70 dB in that area of Pacifica. And so 10 dB above that would be 80 dB A. And I can tell you that when I played there with a small jazz combo duo or trio with amplified music, it's not that loud. And you can have a brass band or a drum corps that's acoustic music and would be way louder than anything I've played there. So I, I ask that you please consider a, a more sensible standard for the level of live, live music outdoors as part of this ordinance. And that it would be wonderful if this could be done on a, on a more timely basis than waiting for all the considerations of, of the ordinance, which I realize takes a lot of planning and discussion and time. Thank you very much for your attention. And I have, I can cite. The EPA model for noise I cited in, in the communications that I already sent. So I won't repeat all that stuff. I hope, I appreciate the council's attention and what they can, whatever they can do to support. I hope, I appreciate the council's attention and whatever they can do to support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowell. Our next speaker is Sean Thompson, followed by Danielle Fandell. Sean, you may now meet yourself.
Josh, can you hear me? Josh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted to voice my strong support for parklets, for outdoor dining, for live music. I've lived in Pacifica for three years now. My wife and I moved here after living in a number of places on the peninsula. We're raising our family here, and we absolutely love Pacifica. But one of the things that's always struck me as surprising is that Pacifica, although one of the most beautiful places, really on the face of the earth, and I don't think I'm being dramatic in saying that, there's a surprising lack of outdoor dining in Pacifica. And yes, at times it can be foggy, but when it's not foggy, it's spectacular. And because of the pandemic, I think someone else mentioned the silver lining of the pandemic. And I certainly think that, you know, if you could put this in that category, the emergency order to increase outdoor dining in Pacifica has created a level of vibrancy in Pacifica that I think was lacking before. And I think people really enjoyed it. And I think that that's evident by comments that the governor has made and others have made. And so the idea that we would block increased access to outdoor dining and live music just seems really counter to what we're trying to achieve in Pacifica, which is a more vibrant visitor-serving destination. So I hope that we can find a compromise here that makes sense. I hope that we can actually invest money in these spaces and make them really nice and attract further visitors to Pacifica so that they can enjoy our beautiful outdoor spaces and the people that live here can also enjoy them too. To me, this seems like a win-win-win. So I appreciate you letting me comment, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker is Danielle, followed by Kathleen Courtney. Danielle, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, Danielle. And the first thing I want to say is the reason everybody asks if they can be heard is because the mute button is hidden until it's your turn and it's handed over to you, and then you can see it and unmute yourself. I assume everyone can hear me. Wanted to just add that I have also, I'm also a musician, and I performed also at The Grape in the Fog as well as previously the Pacifica Brewery, which was previously Surf Spot. And I think that one of the wonderful things, as everybody's mentioning, is having the ability to go to these outdoor spaces, not only as a diner, because I also like to come and watch music and go out and eat outside and sit outside and have always enjoyed that. So having that available to me is, you know, as many other people have said, is a win-win. I certainly understand that that might be difficult for specific businesses, but I would argue that for a Realtor, it brings business. I would think it brings more traffic in front of a Realtor's business or other businesses that are retail. Certainly, it would attract more business rather than hinder their business. I understand that a massage parlor is very specific and a little bit different. But I would also say that we have performed at A Grape in the Fog, both amplified and unamplified. And we were probably louder when we weren't unamplified because of the way the setup was. People were saying they couldn't hear us when we were amplified because we were trying so hard to be careful. So I would agree with Dawn in that amplification or amplified, whether it's amplified or not, is probably not a really good measure of how loud it is. I can tell you that when we've performed there unamplified or amplified, the sound of the motorcycles and some of the louder vehicles on the road were much louder than we were. So certainly, that's not a great base. And in certain places, when you think about the Pacifica Brewery now, that's just finally, you know, having an opportunity to really bring in more bands and have that outdoor space. I don't think that they have anything around them at all. So it just suggests that a place like that, that built a sound, they built a soundstage and a sound booth, and it's, you know, been built up just for that. And it's a pretty large space. And I don't think they have anyone around them that would suffer much from the noise. Mostly, it's the ocean across the street and the sound of the cars on the road. Anyway, that's my two cents. Love Pacifica, want to keep coming, want to keep playing music there, and want to keep eating outside. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Danielle. Our next speaker is Kathleen Courtney, followed by Peter Loeb. Courtney, Kathleen, you may now meet yourself.
Cool. Thank you. I'm very excited to be able to address this because thank you for making this available for us Pacificans. I needed that outdoor entertainment for my soul. It, I mean, COVID and all of this has been so difficult. And hearing music and and being in the sun is just, it's life-giving. But most people know that, and so I don't end off. So everybody knows it's a beach. We should take advantage of the outdoors, pardon me, even though it is foggy. I have been there on the coldest days, and I just put a blanket on at Grape in the Fog they provide. I turn on, I ask them to turn on one of the heaters, and I could sit there and enjoy a beautiful glass of wine and dinner and not worry about it. I know that it must be hard. Reyna moved into the neighborhood, she moved in right next to a bar. So that must be hard. Making that decision to move next to a bar is quite risky. But having said that, I think that the permanent placement will make a big difference for her. And we could leave everything out there. Amplified music is a must because it can be dealt with in a way that is controlled. And saying no amplified music makes no sense because we could, I could set up my drums out there, and we would make way more noise. But amplified music can be controlled. Obviously, the real estate, having the truck in front is a good thing, as we said, because they don't get walk-bys. And they don't get their business from walk-bys. But having said that, if you want attention, being next to A Grape in the Fog, it's always busy, always happening, and always a place where I could just breathe the vibrancy. Someone used the word vibrancy earlier. That is the perfect word for what we're trying to do here in Pacifica, to grow and become a vibrant, happening place that is fiscally viable, where we can fix all our roads, we can do everything that we need because we are bringing in the taxes that we need to bring in. So in summary, oh, yes, please, Jesus, make it a permanent placement. Of course, allow amplified music and a measured bit. And there should be no parking issues. I've never not been able to park at A Grape in the Fog, even during farmer's market. Hey, thanks, you guys. That's it.
Thanks, Kathleen. We have two more speakers. We have Peter, followed by James McLeod. Peter, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Short version, I agree with everything that Don Rowell just said. The issue is not acoustic versus amplified, it's noise level. And the measure of noise level is decibel. So that, as Kathleen was just saying, you could have somebody playing a two-hour drum solo on an acoustic instrument, and that's far more noisy than listening to a solo or duo act play guitar and sing songs. So I think that the amplification is the wrong issue. It should not be there. I also am confused. I have a question. My reading of the noise ordinance for the City of Pacifica, it does not ban amplified music. It says you can't use amplification to draw people to an establishment. Grape in the Fog doesn't do that. It uses music to entertain its existing customers, just the same as being inside, being outside because they're serving wine and food outside. So but earlier in Tina's presentation, there was some mention, there was a line there about amplified music being not allowed. That's not what the noise ordinance says. So my question is, is that some new policy or something part of the outside, whatever it's called, policy that's additional, that's different than the noise ordinance? If so, that's like, that's an unadopted policy that I think that the council can change. I also have the concern that Don Rowell mentioned that if there's going to be community outreach and elaborate discussions and reports and ordinances proposed, that's months down the road. And some of these things need to be fixed now. And if we wait for months, it's just, it's just not an efficient way to do this. I think that, for instance, what Don was talking about, if we could have a policy that says this decibel level measured by this means or whatever, that that's the thing that you can't go over, and that amplification is not the issue here. If we could adopt that soon, that would address that issue much more effectively. I support amplified music at Grape in the Fog. I'm a musician, but I've never played at Grape in the Fog, but all my friends have. So I hope they can keep doing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, I see one more hand being raised. You have two hands raised right now.
At the outset, I had said that we would cut off public comment after Peter Loeb because we have to have time for council communications and questions. I'd like to ask the council, if I might, your pleasure at this point, should we close public comment and move to our own discussion and deliberation and feedback for staff? Or should we have two more public comments and stop there? Tiger Jazz, Troligis Dick.
Howdy. I would certainly favor if it's just two people hearing from them, though I would certainly urge them to keep their comments brief if they've already heard approximately what they're going to say. A lot of people have commented that we should be focusing on decibels, not amplified. So if that's the comment, brief is good, but I favor hearing them.
Anybody else, any other feedback? My inclination is to go ahead, but we need to keep an eye on the clock.
Yeah, I'm okay with two more, but definitely no more.
Not it.
And tell them to hurry, please.
Yeah.
Yes, speakers, if you could please not use all your three minutes, that would give us more time for the overall discussion. Thank you.
Okay, great. James, you may now meet yourself.
Okay, I've just unmuted, so hopefully you can hear me, and I'll be quick. I have been involved with music business, concerts, recording and televization of concerts all over the Bay Area for the last 30 years. I've been living in Pacifica for 23 years. I know a lot about the various outside concerts that have happened around Pacifica because I've been involved with them. I am the person who puts the Chevy truck down at The Grape in the Fog. It's my old Chevy. And sometimes we have bands in it, outside it and around it. But outdoors, music drops off when it doesn't have a lot of stuff to bounce off of. And I would always, at the beginning of every concert, stand at the next building or business next to Grape in the Fog. And I would make sure that the sound level would be just within the dining area. And that's pretty much where it's at. You go another car length down the street, and you can't even hear what the singer's saying and barely hear anything else at all. I have filmed a lot of these things. If anybody in the council wants to see an average show that happens at The Grape of the Fog, I gladly send them a link. The direct neighbor of Grape in the Fog is the Japanese restaurant across the street. I happen to personally know the owner of that restaurant, and they say they love the Saturday afternoon and Sunday concerts at Grape in the Fog. It brings in a lot of customers for them. It's only a couple hours in the afternoon, a couple hours Sunday afternoon. Basically, I agree with what Don Rowell and Mr. Loeb and everybody says. So I'll pretty much cut my statement short. I agree with everything. But one thing that's really important is it brings a lot of spirit to people. And during this time of this COVID and this second series of Delta virus, it's nice to have a little uplifting music and somewhere for people can go on social distance and listen to music. So I think it's very much needed. That's enough. I'm done.
Thanks, James. Sandy, Heather, you may now meet yourself.
Hi there. Yeah, I just want to, you know, I'm one of these people that Tiger mentioned before, and I just want to echo everyone else's thoughts about the amplified versus non-amplified music. Again, you know, I have a music degree. I'm trained in audio engineering. I understand that you get a drummer or a brass band, and it can be totally louder than amplified music. So I just hope here that common sense prevails, and we can move forward with some sort of ordinance that is specific to the situation. I just want to hand it over to my husband, who's a musician and does play in Pacifica quite often. His name's David.
No, can't do that, Sandy.
Oh, we can't do that? So, okay, let me stay on then. So I was gonna, David was gonna talk about the people that he brings down for his gigs. Don't always just stay, we're talking about A Grape in the Fog a lot, even though he plays around. They won't stay at A Grape in the Fog. They'll go out for dinner afterwards. They will go to, they will see that there is an availability for massage up the road. So they will definitely, you know, all the other local businesses will get exposure. So I think by having this music drawer, it doesn't just help our local, the business that the people come to, it helps everybody in the community.
Thanks a lot for those comments. And I just want to conclude by saying that this is a study session, which is not the final session on this topic. This is the beginning session on this topic. We have plenty of time for more input. All right, let's turn it back to council. And I'd like to point out and really ask everybody, council members, help, please, to keep an eye on the clock and to keep an eye on the questions. There are a number of questions that we need to address that Assistant City Manager Warmeister put up on the slides and that we have most of in our packet, but not all, at least that I'm seeing. So if we could go back to the slideshow and begin that discussion, my notes indicate that there were four questions for council to answer, three questions regarding permitting process, two questions regarding entertainment, and one question regarding ARPA funding. In addition to which, we received a question from our public commenters about what are the major obstacles? And I don't think I have anything else noted that is a particular thing to note as questions. Anybody else jump in if I missed something? Okay, so.
I have a question I wanted to ask Tina about the Coastal Commission. In regards to the gentleman mentioned my name in the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission, before the governor's order, was sending letters to cities saying that they need to take back the parklets and spaces that they had allowed because their mandate is for parking for visitors visiting the beach. And any, like Grape in the Fog is a good example. The three spaces in front of The Grape in the Fog, they looked at as three spots that aren't available for someone to go to the beach. And that's why I mentioned the Coastal Commission. But I did want to ask Tina in terms of a process question. Once we pass an ordinance, whatever that is entailed in that, and we go to the Coastal Commission and get the approval from the Coastal Commission, at that point, unless it's like appealed to them, we don't need, an applicant or business would not have to go to the Coastal Commission. Am I correct?
So if we change our ordinance and the Coastal Commission certifies that change, and let's say hypothetically it's a ministerial approval, and the Coastal Commission certifies that, then they would be saying, you know, that that's an exemption, an exempted use in theory, and they would not have to go back each time. But the major hurdle is going to be the initial ordinance adoption and certification.
All right, okay. I just wanted to be sure I was understood correctly. Thank you.
And I don't know if we can get back to the slides. And I don't know if we can get back to the, the slides. While that is being done, I can just read that under activities covered, the first question was, should the permanent ordinance include the right of way or focus on private property only?
Can you define right of way? Is that the sidewalk or just the parking in front of this, the business?
Um, so we, in that, maybe we'll take one and two together. One was just the right of way period, but, but the second question was then drilling down, is it the, just the sidewalk or the sidewalk and parklets?
Okay, so you're defining the right of way as the sidewalk?
The right of way includes the sidewalk as well, yes.
And the street?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, was what was, what was the definition of right of way? Let's see.
I have a question.
Please go ahead.
And so I think I'm confused with, so there's the right of way, that's, that's public property, right? But if, say there's like two or three businesses in a row, can the business only use the right of way right in front of their business?
So that's some of the detail that we're going to get into when we draft the ordinance. The way that the outdoor activity license program works is that it is just a space right in front of your business.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Tina.
And I wanted to be sure, like, just mention this to the public and the council. Any rules or ordinance we develop is for the entire city, not just Grape in the Fog and Rockaway Beach. So our consideration will be the fact that there are, especially on Palmetto, places that may want to have outdoor activities, but they're, they, you know, they have, you know, three or four unit apartment building next door and above them. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you.
City Clerk, is there any way we can get to slide four?
Which one is that, Tina?
It's the activities covered.
Okay.
There we go.
I kind of feel, yeah, should the permanent ordinance include use of the right of way and right of way being either the street and the sidewalk and the area directly in front of the business? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Members, if you agree with that, can you indicate so? Or if you want to speak on that, raise your hand. If you agree, nod. Yes. Okay, it looks to me like you have, and, and please correct me if I'm not seeing it, because I'm trying to look at it, a film strip of people and a slide at the same time. So I think the answer to the question, one and two, is yes, and yes.
And then the next question is the question of sole use of adjacent business or be available to non-customers?
Okay, so basically, will it become a public area where anybody can sit? Or exclusive to the businesses? Now, could we allow, like up in Pacific Manor and Manor Shopping Center, there's like three restaurants in a row. They could all go together and form one parklet, correct? If that's.
Yes.
Possibly. I mean, I think that would be something we want to explore.
Pedro Point has that too.
Yeah.
Various restaurants use the same one.
Yeah, okay. Should the permanent focus on parklet, include parkits or focus on sidewalks? What is an appropriate width? One square, two square?
Oh, I think we're on question three.
Well, permanence, permanence, do we want permanence of them?
Yeah, the number two is if you use right of ways supported, should the permanent ordinance include parklets? Or focus on sidewalks with appropriate widths only? So appropriate width you define as one sidewalk square or two?
I believe the appropriate width would be three to four feet for ADA accessibility. So it would only be fairly wide sidewalks.
Just bring that up, Tina.
Okay, and then permanent ordinance, should the permanent ordinance include parklets? So you're asking us about the ordinance or are we asking for permanent parklets?
No, it was, the way I was, what I was trying to say is just to differentiate between the temporary emergency program that we have now and what we're trying to do, which is adopt an ordinance that would be in case, be in place regardless of a pandemic.
Okay, okay.
And I also think you need to include locations that are not just eating and drinking, but several of the fitness centers had outdoor uses also, which could continue.
That's one of the future slides. Doesn't one of the future slides ask about different kinds of businesses?
Right, and that's question four. So the, the the, the gyms tended to be on private property within their parking lots. And the right of way spaces, not exclusively, but tended to mainly be eating and drinking establishments.
Okay, kind of getting back to number three. Ultimately, this ordinance will have to go to the Coastal Commission. Would it be more favorable for the Coastal Commission to give its blessing if we allowed anybody that wanted to sit in the chair to sit in the chair? Do you think that would be a consideration?
Public access, I think it would be a consideration. We've heard some feedback at the Economic Development Committee meeting as well about alternate uses not being strictly commercial uses even of these spaces as public spaces. So I think that, you know, we're getting to a granular detail that I think we need to put that on the table for staff to address and bring back.
Yeah.
Except that.
So should we say that we're open to it and see what staff comes back with?
I, yes. Because there's going to be a lot of research involved in this.
And then the focus on dining, drinking. Okay, now I think there you get into different things in terms of like up at, in Pacific Manor, there's that store next to Tams that always has a book cart out there and some shelves and stuff like that. And even some of the antique stores on Palmetto put their merchandise out on the sidewalk. Is that what you're kind of talking about, Tina, there?
Yes.
Okay, so then those, those establishments, like the one up on Pacific Manor and then on Palmetto, would have to come and get one of these new permits under the ordinance then, right?
Yes, and, and it's, it's, what it's getting at is if you have a parklet that's on Palmetto, people tend to envision those as dining, eating or drinking, but is the council's intention to also make parklets available for general retail?
Right, for the different types of businesses, right?
Right.
I mean, if kids wanted to go down and meet there for, and do their homework together at a table is what you're saying. And they're not going to buy anything from the restaurant. They're just going to sit there.
No, what I'm saying is if you have a retail establishment and they bring out their racks of clothing, for example, and that is what's in the parklet.
I, I think you can't discriminate and make it only for dining when there's a lot of other businesses
Right, except marijuana.
would want to have things outside.
Mike, you bring up a good point. When you say except marijuana, I was also going to say there, and this is part of staff's in research, is ABC licensing and other, you know, different kinds of licensing and implications of that.
Tobacco, marijuana and alcohol, yeah.
Right.
Or uses, and that would not be impacted by this. And I, I agree that once the state's regulatory relief ends, then the businesses who are, you know, serving alcohol will, will probably need to follow up with ABC and adjust their permits or their, their licenses.
I'm checked.
Time check. We have like three minutes or something, right?
We need a few more, we need a little more time on this.
Yeah, we do. So let's.
Did you want to move on to the next section?
Yes. No, I feel, does staff feel like they have enough to go on from the, the responses thus far is my real question back to you.
As, the only thing is, I feel like I know the consensus on one, two and three, and just checking that four.
I'm okay with four, yes. That is anybody except those ones mentioned, yeah.
And Sarah, if you can move up two slides. And then permitting process. So to keep it succinct, did you want this to be a use permit process? Which is?
I think ministerial is my preference.
Council members, other thoughts?
Um, I, I think you can do it that way, but there needs to be some, I mean, if the person gets multiple complaints, if you've done it ministerial, and then there's a bunch of complaints against a certain business, then I think that should be taken into consideration because you haven't notified anyone else nearby that that's what's going to happen.
But I think we could put that into the ministerial approval process.
Well, then that's a hybrid.
Yeah, kind of a hybrid thing, okay, that you do it. And then if it's ministerial approved, it's easier for the department, the planning department to pull the permit, I would think, than if there was a use permit granted. Am I accurate in that or inaccurate, Tina?
Uh, it, it, it could be just as difficult. I, I would would maybe advocate for the hybrid approach.
Yeah, and, and I would just add, it would be just as difficult. The, the, the issue with revocation would, would go through the same procedures. They have the same rights as they would if it was under a discretionary approval process.
Okay, I would advocate for hybrid, hybrid process than ministerial.
Council members, do you agree with that?
They currently have permits, right? The people who are doing it now, they have permits, right?
They have outdoor activity licenses, which are valid during this emergency order period. And once that is up, then we would need to be able to transition to this permanent process.
So are you thinking about?
If I'm understanding, Councilmember Veer's question, perhaps if you already have an outdoor activity license, there's some transition where you don't start from square one again.
Right.
And, and the time involved, right?
Yeah, and we just want to make sure it's the same across the board. So I think that's what's making me a little unsure about the ministerial approval. Because if we're going to treat all the businesses the same, do you see what I mean? So maybe I just need to learn a little bit more about what that'll look like. And you could bring back information about it.
When we get into the questions about entertainment, especially, that's when we start talking about decibel levels and the like. And I feel like that's microcosmic of what needs to happen in terms of what we're ministerially approving. So in other words, you know, if we're making this big concerted effort to give a really nuanced definition of what you are allowed to do, and then the planning department can write off on it. I feel like as long as we do our due diligence and making sure that we're approving a nuanced version, ministerial should work okay for us.
So I'm hearing.
And yes, probably set fees would be good so that people know when they go into it that they have a set fee.
I, I agree with that, yes.
Right. Right, because I know use permits can be extremely costly and time consuming. So I'm leaning toward ministerial. Possibly you need to make that hybrid. We need more details from staff. But I also favor set fee.
You too, what you just said.
So again, Sarah, if we could go, go up two slides. Any preliminary feedback regarding entertainment? Should entertainment, it, it is the one activity that tends to get more complaints? And should entertainment be included in the ministerial process or should it have a hybrid approach? Or should the ministerial process be very, very clear and specific as Councilmember Big Stick mentioned, where is perhaps certain days of the week, certain hours and certain decibels?
Well, I think, I think there definitely should be day and hour limits, like most businesses are nine to five. I think that, let's say, music starts at six or something on the corner or on the street. Because I think the other businesses do have, you know, a right to kind of their access to their business, et cetera.
Yeah, it depends, Mike. I mean, I, I don't think I can say all businesses, most businesses are nine to five. I mean, even days of the week aren't standard.
No, that, that's true too. I mean.
So I think what, what we're getting into here is the issue of public notice, public hearing versus ministerial. And so I'm not sure if they can put enough detail into a ministerial process to, to bypass a full public hearing process. I'd be, I'm interested in hearing anyone else's thoughts or concerns on that.
I have thoughts.
Remember Big Stick, go ahead.
Thank you. While I was listening to Raina Joy Beach, what occurred to me was this is that place where public engagement is so important. And, you know, she was the one who spoke out, but I would suspect there are other businesses who might be similarly affected. And I think that it's particularly important that we reach out, certainly to her business and any others that we possibly can to survey, you know, what would it look like if there were the healthy relationship between those employing the outdoor music and those who initially are hesitant to share that with their neighbors? So I think that if, again, and I don't know what kind of range of feedback is available to us, but conceivably, if we do a good job surveying the various businesses that might be adversely affected, we might come up with a really good rendition of what hours and decibel levels, et cetera, look like. And that may or may not feed into whether or not ministerial is viable.
Well, I mean, maybe we could go to almost a hybrid permit in terms of a permit is granted, if you want music or entertainment, you have to go through a different route. Or like one's granted, kind of not automatic, but, you know, pretty smoothly. But then if you want it, if you want outdoor entertainment and music, you take and you go another mile type of thing.
And the specifics of that should be determined and brought back by staff?
Yeah.
Like, we're not making that decision in the next 30 seconds?
No.
Yes.
And I, I do have to say that people need to regard other people's businesses. These are other people's livelihoods. And just because you that, oh, the music is great, when I'm conducting business in an office and I can't hear, nor can my clients hear, that's not a good thing. And it's not fair to the massage therapist or anybody else if their business is also deterred and they could lose much of their business because people won't come. Because first of all, they can't park. And second of all, there's loud music. They have to climb over people to get to a business. That's not right. So I just think that the people need to all work together to make this cohesive for everybody and not just one topic, because it's not one topic here.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the surveying of the businesses. I think that's really important and outreach to them. And then I was also a little concerned about, you know, having things like directly in front of other businesses. And so I, I don't know where we're going to talk about that, but I do think going with all of the people who, who talked about amplification and decibels, we should probably look into what that means and how it's measured and who measures it. Now it's enforced.
Right, and, and standards and what is done in other communities, I think is relevant here. Also, there are different areas of town, some of which have, may have specific plan, may have redevelopment overlays or things like that, that it would be useful to have that information as well as it pertains. And we, we use this phrase, a visitor serving a lot, what does that mean? Exactly. And, you know, is, what is a visitor serving business and where is it located? And those kinds of concepts, I feel like are going to need to be addressed in some way. And those kinds of concepts, I feel like are gonna need to be addressed in some way, either through the survey process or. In terms of our other documentation that we have, and one of our callers brought up a point, um, and needed clarification. In regard to the noise ordinance, which we do have already on the books, so that would be another piece that needs to be brought forward. And how that would mesh with this. You know, that existing ordinance would mesh with what we're looking to do with, on the permanent, uh, directivities ordinance.
And just to clarify on that question, the, the amplification that was up on the screen, the, the couple sentences. That is from the outdoor activity license, the temporary program, it's not, uh, not an, an ordinance that was, that was changed, so it is able to be modified.
Okay, so going back to these questions, do you feel you have what you need from us at this point Tina, or do you need more?
I have what I need, there is just one more question, which is, um, the use of American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Right.
For business assistance, um, for this program in particular and potentially, um. Uh, use to construct semi-permanent. Facilities.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm open to doing that, however. I'm not quite sure and then not, don't really know all the uses you could use that fund, those funds for, I know there's restrictions. But now here's a, like, now we're being able to possibly give small business grants to different businesses. I would kind of like, before we make that decision, know what can we do with the money? If there's another avenue that maybe we might wanna pursue, there might not be any other, and, and I'm certainly open to doing this. But I'd like to know what we can do with the money, what we can't do with the money, and the rules of the road. Before we make a commitment to anything else.
Okay, more comprehensively, what can it be used to help small businesses?
Right, that maybe we can target it with certain areas of town that might need a little help, um. Certain businesses in town that might need help, you know, that kind of thing. Versus. You know, like this, and I'm certainly not against doing this thing at all.
Um, yeah, Mayor Proton?
I absolutely think we should use it if we can. And then we have to come up with a program, so, eh, there's equity and how it's distributed.
I completely agree, well stated, thank you for that.
I totally agree.
Yes.
I think that's it.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, council members, it is exactly seven thirteen, according to my clock, um, I would like to. Take a five-minute break. To transition, um, and we will come back and then we'll start our council member, our council meeting. Um, let's get back, uh, in five minutes and we'll try to start by seven twenty.
And we stay on the same Zoom link, right?
Oh, can, um, City Clerk Coffee and.
Yes, and that's correct, the Zoom link is the same for the regular meeting as the study session, so you can stay on and just turn off your camera and mute yourself.
Very good, thank you very much, thanks everyone, thank you Tina, Ms., Assistant City Manager.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I was reading a text message.
Oh, no worries, and I realize sometimes when the camera's off, you're actually here and ready to go. So, I'm, call the regular meeting to order, it is seven twenty PM. And I just wanna make sure that PCT is rolling and ready, um, City Clerk Coffee.
I believe PCTV is rolling.
And were we able to address the, um, subtitles issue?
Um, did those end up coming up on the screen while the presentation was on?
No, I, I didn't see him at all, although it does say, um, live transcription, closed captioning has been enabled, and then there's a question, who can see this transcript? I have never seen that before.
So we will let the city clerk address that, we don't need to address that here at this time, so.
Okay, I just wanted to note, make sure we had it on the top of our minds. Um, so we're calling the meeting to order.
Tigger has his hand up.
Can we have roll call, please?
Council member Big Stick?
Present.
Council member Vitor Laszlo?
Here.
Council member O'Neil?
Present.
Mayor Proton Beer?
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Here.
And we'll have a salute to the flag led by council member O'Neil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, um, City Clerk Coffee, we stated the conditions of the meeting at the beginning with our, um, study session, do we need to go over that again now?
I'll go ahead and, uh, repeat the meeting format information for those that are joining for the regular meeting.
Thank you.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe, uh, the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel twenty-six and online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through Zoom, for members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on the agenda item or during oral communications. When the mayor calls upon that agenda item. For those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number at dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and emailed public comments will not be read during the meeting, but were made part of the written record and provided to council members if received by four PM today. Uh, the format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed, you may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
All right, great, thank you very much, um, before we go on, I just wanna double check with council member Big Stick, he indicated it's something he need to say.
Uh, thank you, just to the, um, question of the closed captioning, it, it strikes me that Zoom might have done some sort of update recently, cause a few things looked different to me. But at the top of my screen, it says that there's closed captioning available, and then when I go to the bottom of my screen where it says live transcript. And I press that button, it gives me a short, um, menu option and view full transcript is one of those options. So all I'm saying is whereas before it automatically came up, it might be that somebody might have to actually elect to use that feature now.
Understood, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Cause I know we've heard from the public on that issue. All right, um, I would like to ask council members, returning to our consent agenda. I'd like to ask council members if you would like to pull any consent items for deliberation or discussion, anything beyond, uh, simple question or statement. If so, please raise your hand.
Um, I think I'd like to pull the item twelve. The City of Pacifica and Four Leafy for construction management.
Okay. Um, that's on the Sarah Drive project, okay, any others? Not seeing any. May I have a motion, oh, are there any members of the public, no, wait, we're setting aside, I am twelve.
Any open public comment on all of the, uh. Calendar items, numbers one through eleven.
Okay, I see two hands raised right now, um, it looks like these people are indicating that they would like to speak or asking for. Discussing items on the consent calendar items one through eleven, now I see three hands. So if it's on those topics, um, Mr. Montemayor?
Okay, while we wait for their time to be pulled up, I'll see, um.
And, and Mr. Monte Mayor, before they start speaking, let's confirm that they're speaking on the consent calendar.
Right, if you're speaking, um, if you have your hand raised, uh, please note that these are gonna be, should be commenting on items one through eleven on the consent calendar item. Um, our first hand raised is John Simpson, followed by Cliff Lawrence, John, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's John Simpson, I live at eight oh three Burns Court and, um. Had a meeting, uh, Sunday with a lot of the, uh, neighbors here and they're very concerned about the homeless encampment or the RV parking, a homeless. RV parking on Ridgeway.
Madam Mayor, so we do, I, I am gonna ask Mr. Monte Mayor that, once they're unmuted, to get confirmation that. And state exactly which consent calendar item they are speaking on.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had my mic off when I was trying to interrupt Mr. Simpson, um, you need to let us know, Mr. Simpson, items one through eleven on the consent agenda. If there's an item that you wish to speak on, otherwise if your comments are of a general nature, we would ask that you please wait until we go to our regular oral communications section.
And Madam Mayor, if it is on the consent calendar, we need to know exactly which item they are speaking on. So they need to state before they start speaking which item they are speaking on.
Okay, I'm not sure what item i- it is, is the, the homeless RV parking on Ridgeway.
That would, that would be during the regular, um, oral communications.
Okay.
Regular oral communications, you can raise your hand at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, Cliff Lawrence, you're now allowed to mute yourself, please state what item on the consent calendar item you will be speaking on.
Hello, uh, I'm, uh. I wanna speak in reference to item number eight, my name is Cliff Lawrence, uh, I'm in, uh. Fairmont West, uh, item eight is about a master contract for, uh. Uh, imaging and document management services, and while I was kind of scanning through your document. I noticed, uh, it said County of Alameda, Sheriff's Department County of Alameda. Now I can't figure out why that's on page two twenty-four, but I've been in this business. That business, document management, and I've been involved with a lot of documents and cut and paste is, uh, not unusual. But if you're gonna do it. You've got the responsibility to really check it to be sure. It is, so this is sloppy in my view, and if it was my work, I'd be embarrassed, I'd wanna pull it and have a chance to present it. Uh, without any other errors, because this to me might just be the top. Uh, this contract's for a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know if that's, uh, the total or, uh, per year. Uh, there could be a lot of money that goes into this, this is not a new. This is not a established, uh, long-time firm, it's only got six employees, uh, they don't have really, uh, a very big gross coding to the internet. And, uh, the equipment that they're using, uh, may present some problems because they've gone to favoring Panasonic and, uh, that plant burned down, so, uh. They're gonna have problems there, uh, previously they used Fujitsu and, that's on their website, but apparently they had problems with that a long time ago. Change, so, uh, I asked it to, uh, consider, you know, taking a second look at this. I've been advised by people in the business specifically about this, uh, one that if the county wants to go ahead with this. They're gonna have to be very careful about their specis-, specificity of their requirements. On each and every task, because like I said, this, uh, this is a group that looks like. It's, uh, a little bit fledgling and trying to claim that they can do maybe more than what some others can do. I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff, we have one more hand raised, Madam Mayor, from, from the jewel name, Chris. Uh, Chris, you may now mute yourself, please state which item. Please state which item on the consent calendar you wish to speak on.
My name's Chris Ostrom, I'm at 28, I'll call a court in Pacifica. I, I was under the impression that we were going to be addressing the public hearing issue of item 13. But from what I've heard so far, it doesn't seem like the agenda is going to get that far this evening, am I correct?
Sorry, no, that's not accurate, sir. The public hearing is item 13, but we're going through our consent agenda first. And then we will have oral communications from the public on any topic for three, up to three minutes. Then we'll have council communications and staff communications. Then we'll move to item 13, our public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor, I see no more hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. I'm ready for a motion on items one through 11.
I move that we approve consent items number one through 11 as stated. I do have a question in regards to item number eight from the speaker. Is the city manager's available?
So do we want to have question answered first?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we won't have a motion yet, we'll have question answered.
Kevin, could you please describe the vetting and how this particular firm was chosen for item number eight?
I'm going to defer to Assistant City Manager Waremeister, who can speak to the purchasing process for that contract.
Okay.
Thank you. So this, this, this contract was, did go through the city's purchasing policy vetting process. We put out a RFP, we received, I believe, more than five applications. We reviewed all for meeting the city's qualifications and needs. The vendor in this case does have quite a bit of experience and is well-regarded in the industry and had very good reference checks. And, and so that is why we selected this vendor. They are also familiar with our document management system and will be able to assist with preparing proper templates. I think the speaker spoke to that. And I will say that the reference to the sheriff's department is actually in the city's adopted policy. It's not in some document that this consultant prepared, so we need to correct that clerical error in the policy. But it was not associated with something that this consultant prepared.
Okay, then, so I make the motion that we approve consent items one through 11?
One second.
With the motion by council member O'Neil and second by Mayor Protem Beer for approving items number one through 11, do the roll call vote, starting with council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Butterloss.
Yes, and thank you, council member O'Neil, for bringing up that question, since several of us had it. Thank you.
Council member O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And consent calendar items one through 11 passed with a vote of five to zero.
Okay, then we'll go to consent agenda item 12 that council member O'Neil asked to have pulled. Mayor Protem, I mean, city attorney, do we have public comment on that first? Or do we hear from council member O'Neil on that first?
It, whatever the preference of the council is, we just need to have public comment before a motion or action is taken.
All right.
Public comment first.
Oh, public comment first, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Montemayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I currently don't see the hand raised for the individual who wanted to comment on item 12, I believe.
12.
So if anybody in the audience wishes to comment on consent item 12, if you would please raise your hand so we can see you. I see one hand.
I see one hand as well, from Remy Tan, followed by Dave. Remy, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, Remy Tan, Pacific Manor. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of items, you know, including item 12, that's related to all of the infrastructure repair for, you know, the sewer outfall. And, you know, this has been an ongoing problem as long as I've lived here in, in Pacifica. So I, I have a question because there's so many items on there that, did we apply for some of the proposed infrastructure improvement money that's coming out of the federal government to pay for all this stuff? Because I think we got, you know, probably even more projects, you know, given, given the, you know, state of deferred maintenance on, on all the sewer, sewage systems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. I'm, I'm, I don't see the hand raised anymore, that was previously up. So there is no more hand raised at this time.
All right, then we'll close public comment on consent agenda item 12. Bring it back to council, council member O'Neil.
Yeah, I was just going to be voting no on this item just because of the issues we've had with Four Leaf in the past and the equalization basin, et cetera. So I just was, I am for fixing the sewer outfall. I'm also for the, you know, the easement, the government easement part of it. So, but I'm just concerned that we just seem to be using Four Leaf and we've had some experiences in closed session and stuff with them. So I was just going to be voting no on this. No need for a staff report, that's my preference, I'm, yeah, whatever. So someone else make a motion? Or I can make the motion and then you all vote no, and that'd be a first, pass a consent item voting no.
Council member Big Stick.
I am not making a motion. No, I was hoping somebody could address Remy Tan's question about whether or not there's any federal funding involved with this project.
Sure, I'd be happy to start with that. And Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. As everyone knows, the federal infrastructure bill is not passed yet. We don't know any details regarding that. We, Congresswoman Spear did put in for a couple projects that would be paid for out of that bill, but we're going to have to wait and see what the, what the money is applied to and the criteria, how it's going to be dispersed, et cetera. As we discussed during budget development process for this fiscal year, the American Rescue Plan Act funds can be applied to some stormwater projects. But our, our capital projects approved by the council include a variety of funding sources for, for stormwater projects. I, I'll leave it to Deputy Director Bautista and Lawrence, Associate Civil Engineer, if, if they want to speak to the specific funding for this project.
Sure, good evening, council members. This project is actually funded through insurance, through insurance. This project, this sewer outfall was damaged during a storm and we applied for insurance monies to have this repaired. So this is how this project is being funded.
Thank you very much.
So are there other questions on consent agenda item 12? If not.
Motion.
Is there a motion? Council member Butterloss.
I move that we pass item, consent item number 12.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I mean, city attorney, I mean, city clerk coffee.
For agenda item number 12, a motion was made by council member Butterloss with a second by Mayor Protem Beer. I'll do the roll call vote, starting with council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Butterloss.
Yes.
Council member O'Neil.
No.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number 12 passes with a vote of four to, or in favor, when opposed.
Very well, thank you very much. And that concludes the consent items. Moving to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight. Any person wishing to address the council should be recognized by myself, the mayor, during oral communications, provided that during oral communications, portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for tonight's meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title 2, Chapter 1, Section 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the direction of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during the meeting. So that brings us to oral communications. Mr. Montemayor, do we have hands raised?
Yes, Mayor Beckmeyer, we have 12 hands, 13 hands now raised at this time. Our first hand is from Diana Reddy, followed by Martin.
Sue's trying to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to suggest we have a large number attend, 18 hands up. And then we also have a couple items that are going to have a lot of speakers. So I was going to make, see if the council would entertain two minutes of speaker.
That seems reasonable to me, council members. I can't see you all right now, but if you agree with that, or let's say if you don't agree with that, would you please speak up? All right, then we'll reset the clock, we'll have a two minutes per speaker. Thank you. Thank you, council member O'Neil.
City clerk coffee, recessed the clock to two minutes. I wanted the council to be aware that we have 22 hands raised now at this time. Our first speaker is Diana, followed by Martin. Diana, you may now mute yourself.
Thank you very much, can you, can you hear me all right?
Yes, Diana.
I'm not used to being on this side. So greetings, I'm Diana Reddy. I happen to be a member of city council in Redwood City, though I'm, I'm coming to you as a private citizen. But I just wanted to offer to my council colleagues and staff in Pacifica the opportunity to work with us if there's interest in Pacifica to launch a safe parking program. At the point that I did join the Sematell County survey of residents who lived in their homes, in their mobile homes, I discovered that the vast majority were former Redwood City residents. And I'm thinking that that may be the case in Pacifica as well. And so I just wanted to report to you that Redwood City does now have a very successful safe parking program. And it became successful because we did a lot of surveying of our community, our mobile home residents and residents, housed residents who were concerned about the unhoused residents. And, and we did a lot of research in those communities that are currently having safe parking programs. And I just wanted to offer any help that I can give you at that point that Pacifica might be interested in looking at a safe parking program for its unhoused people who are living in their mobile homes. And thank you very much, and, and it was great being with you tonight.
Thank you, Diana. Our next speaker is Martin Anaya, followed by Steve DeGree. Brian, you may now mute yourself.
Hello, everybody, this is Marty Anaya, Pacifica Community Television, and I just wanted to come to you with a couple of quick announcements. As you know, PCT is a 21st century media center, but we're also the nation's oldest media center and a workforce development training center. So in the coming weeks, we're going to be developing a needs assessment to determine what those workforce development needs are, what those community media needs are right now. We have a pretty good idea what we think a lot of those answers are going to be. But as you know, also, there's been a huge shift and we've had a huge shift in our workload due to the pandemic. Second, and really kind of tied to this, is that we're also going to be holding an ad hoc meeting on August 19th. And I would invite anybody to give me a call if you'd like to be a part of it. My number is 650-355-8001. And the idea is to have community stakeholders discuss the feasibility of purchasing our space at the Crespi Business Center. I know that anybody that's not been under a rock probably knows that we're in a kind of a dire straits right now at PCT. And we're looking for answers because, again, they're not making too much more real estate that can house what we do. There are some potential options if we do need to move, but right now we're looking at those very hard. So we're really, really trying to get some stakeholders to determine the feasibility of buying, staying where we're at in the Crespi Business Center, and how we might identify sources of funding, sources of help, maybe through the county, through the city, and through some of our stakeholder organizations, but also through the community itself. So I want to put it out there again, 650-355-8001. I also want to invite you all on September 11th to PCT honors. I'll have more on that soon, but this is our wonderful celebration, and we hope that you all join us. Thanks, guys.
And Martin. Our next speaker is Steve DeGree, followed by Brian Greenberg. Steve, you may now mute yourself.
Good evening, Sue DeGrees. Right, so city council meetings and municipal meetings are a great asset for those of us in the public to be able to speak. It's a wonderful American tradition. So during COVID, it is extremely difficult. I don't know how council does it, or staff, or the other appointed folks. You're trying to stay abreast of all the things that are happening in our town, and we want to be very involved. It's very difficult. Tonight, it was hard to hear in some situations. PCT was a wonderful thing, and some of us cannot get it on our TV. That's another concern. Very concerned about being able to reach all of our people, so we're all informed and able to be engaged in a very timely manner and not, when everything's done, have to wring our hands and say what the heck happened. Concerned about piecemeal changes to our general plan. And one part of our general plan, I would like to note tonight on page 28 of our 1980 general plan, under policies number five, ridge lines are designated as visually prominent, shall be protected from residential and commercial development. So it's just very concerning and being able to participate in our own constitution. The general plan states who we are, who we want to be in our culture. So very concerned about those things, concerned about overworked council and staff, too. Take care of yourselves.
Yes, Sue. Our next speaker is Brian Greenberg, followed by Christine Bowles. Brian, you may now mute yourself. Brian Greenberg, you and next up.
Thank you, my name is Brian Greenberg. I'm over Programs and Services of Life Moves. We operate the safe and supportive parking for oversized vehicles in Redwood City. I just want to use Redwood City as an example of an effective way to deal with the oversized parking on the streets and individuals and families living with them. When we surveyed people living in oversized vehicles, we found 117 on the streets of Redwood City. After the program's been in operation for approximately a year, we have the number down somewhere between 12 and 16 oversized vehicles. We've done that with intensive case management, with a lot where we first allowed families and then seniors and then single adults that were younger onto the lot. We now have 40 RVs. Persons that are on a waitlist get a placard so that they don't get those three tickets and then get towed. It's really, Redwood City is kind of a role model in not pushing. individuals and families living in oversized vehicles into the next community, but dealing with it. As Supervisor Reddy said, the great majority of people went to high school within, either right there, within five miles of Redwood City. Pacifica is probably the same, probably similar. And again, the merchants are happier with it, law enforcement's happier with it, and the residents are happier with it. A small lot, case management for people looking to get into the lot and providing that before any, no overnight parking of oversized vehicle is enforced. Thank you very much.
Brian, our next speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Alice Soal. Christine, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Potembeer, and councilmembers. First, I'd like to reiterate my support for a safe parking program for oversized vehicles as a pathway to permanent housing solutions, especially in the time of COVID that has exacerbated so many of our residents' ability to maintain their income and housing. I encourage you to act with compassion and find solutions that will give temporary places to park as we work together to find longer term solutions. I was driving in San Francisco yesterday around Lake Merced and saw a huge increase in oversized vehicles parked along the wider roads of the lake and approaches to Stonestown Mall. I did not see any issues with trash or sewage, or even people loitering around these vehicles. You might want to consider checking in with officials in San Francisco and Redwood City to see how these issues neighbors are complaining about here in Pacifica might be better addressed. Secondly, in the last three planning commission meetings, commissioners have asked for a discussion of our hillside preservation ordinance so they can better understand the regulations and the nuances of interpretations. I heard them ask for a joint session with the city council so there can be actual discussion of the ordinance and not just a one-sided presentation by staff. I and many members of the public would like to see this type of meeting as well so that we can be part of the discussion and make public comments as to the intent of the ordinance and its importance for protecting such valuable city assets for residents, wildlife, and tourist income. As last week, a project at the end of Talbot came before the planning commission asking for major concessions and variances from HPD. It is essential that this conversation happen very soon. I urge you to make sure this meeting is a priority in your scheduling. Thank you.
Christine, our next speaker is Alice, followed by Julie. Alice, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. My name is Alice Soal, and I am a resident in Pacific Manor. I've lived in Pacifica since 2005, when I moved here to become a faculty member at the Department of Philosophy at San Francisco State University. I lived at Pacifica's Estates from 2005 to 2014, and I understand some of my neighbors became homeless during the evictions there shortly after I moved. I now own a home in Pacific Manor, and I'm the mother of a five-year-old who's starting kindergarten at Ocean Shore in the fall. I want to offer my support for a safe housing program in Pacifica. I want to add that as a young person and as a student, I was homeless for a year. Further, as a faculty member at San Francisco State, I daily hear my students around the Bay Area talk about how homelessness is either a reality or a constant threat. As a faculty member at a major university, I'm encouraged to view every student as someone who has the same potential as any other one. Any of them can contribute to scholarship. Any of them can get a BA, an MA, a PhD. Any of them can be of service. I've seen students make miraculous recoveries and change the courses of their lives. So my question is, can we view our residents in the same way? We have a choice in Pacifica about how we view people and their potential, their commitment to our town, and their capacity to be of service in our town. I hope we can separate bad behavior of the few from the potential of the rest. I'm thrilled to hear we have residents in Pacifica who are putting together a pathway for safe housing for those who are currently housed in their vehicles. They're working with models that have worked in other towns. This volunteer effort gives us a wonderful opportunity to help people and to help Pacifica. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alice. Our next speaker is Julie, followed by Suzanne Moore. Julie, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie Stareben. I live in Pacific Manor. I'm a member of Pacifica Social Justice. I wanted to thank the city for posting the list of streets and a map where oversized vehicles can be parked in Pacifica, because this really helps people who are forced to live in their vehicles, not by choice, but by circumstance. This is a good start towards acknowledging that help is needed and necessary. The next step is to create a self-parking, safe parking program for Pacifica. Supervisor Horasly and the county have funds available to expedite this, but the council needs to step forward with a request and a possible plan. I believe this is possible. I hope that the council will see fit to make this happen. Surveys done in Pacifica have shown that most homeless people here were priced out of housing in this community and have strong ties here. The whole city of Pacifica would benefit from an ongoing program that would provide healthy waste disposal and also one that would offer help towards transitional housing. As you know, and as we've heard, many other cities in our state, in our area, have instituted these programs, all to no bad results. They've had programs, there's not been an influx of unhoused people into their community. San Mateo County has funds that could be made available to cities for these purposes. I'm hoping that the council will take advantage of the support of the county and the knowledge and the resources of the Pacifica Resource Center and move forward with a safe parking program. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Tom Pacifica. Suzanne, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Moore, Manor District resident, retired healthcare provider, and an advocate of safe parking programs since I learned of their effectiveness a few years ago. I appreciate recent steps this council has taken in providing a list and map of legal parking for oversized vehicles in our community. This makes it easier for Pacificans living in motorhomes to find a place to rest. I appreciate the fact sheet the city put up to counter misinformation in the community. I want to acknowledge how difficult it must be for you, councilmembers, right now, in this moment in time, in a pandemic and economic downturn, and with a fearful community, and to acknowledge that members of our community are fearful and that you, as councilmembers, must respectfully listen and consider their concerns. What I hope for is all council and community that we consider evidence which supports safe parking programs as a pathway toward permanent housing. And we take the courageous steps to assist fellow Pacificans who are in need of housing when affordable housing is scarce. I hope the council can continue its positive efforts, work with the county to fund a safe parking program, and follow through on ways to equitably support those most impacted on our coast. It appears that life moves, and Redwood City is open to council members touring Redwood City's safe parking, and that may help council better understand their program. It was a long weary winter, and COVID is not done with us yet. We have an opportunity to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Tom Pacifica, followed by Shawna Gekordin. Tommy, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, city council members as well as community members. My name is Tom Rubsick. I live here in East Fairway Park, and I was just calling to see about how we would go about getting Ridgeway Drive as well as Westport Drive. Not as importantly, Westport, but Ridgeway Drive removed from this map. As there's a baseball field here, there's kids, there's baseball, and I don't think that there was much consideration done before, before adding Ridgeway Drive to this map of what they, what you guys, of what is said to be 500 available RV spaces, which seems excessive. And that's my main concern. But other than that, I'm for all the safe parking initiatives and getting this all done right, but just specifically I'm just calling about my neighborhood and to see what we can do to get this street removed from that map.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker is Shawna, followed by Ellen H. Shawna, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. I've lived in Monterrey for 31 years, and I'm a member of Faith in Action Bay Area, and I too am concerned about the safe parking program. I hope that a full-fledged one gets going on the model that Redwood City has been talking about. The shortage of affordable housing affects the entire Bay Area, including all of us on the coast side. Even those of us who are comfortably and securely housed depend on the essential work of others who have been heavily burdened by this horrible pandemic. Many breadwinners have been sick, have died, or have been incapacitated, have lost jobs. Some have sold all that they have in order to stay housed. And that hasn't worked for some. They have gotten, had to go homeless or go to their vehicles. We're just nothing like out of the woods yet. We have begun some good remedies here on the coast side. The city of Half Moon Bay started its first full-time residential center with professional oversight, case management, wraparound services to help homeless coastsiders from Pacifica on down transition back to steady work, housing, and normal life. And this is a great ray of hope. And I think that the Pacifica City Council's ray of hope that they have offered is fantastic. You posted street maps and the fact sheets so they can find legal parking. And it's a great start. I hope, really hope that we will continue that start into a strong program that will make everybody sleep better at night. It's not that the crazy people become homeless. It's homelessness makes you crazy, and it's gonna, it affects all of us. We will all be more sane and, and more at ease when the people who are the worst off in this pandemic are taken better care of and find a way up. Thank you very much.
Shawna, our next speaker is Ellen H., followed by Joanne Rukowski. Ellen, I think Ellen might have your hand down. Ellen, if you want to comment, please raise your hand again. Thank you. Ellen, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer and city council members. My name is Ellen Haig, a resident of Pacifica for 47 years and a board member with Faith in Action Bay Area. I'm speaking this evening to express my strong support for a safe parking program in Pacifica. I know it's not been an easy undertaking coming up with a plan for our residents who live in their vehicles, and I greatly appreciate the efforts you've made so far posting a useful map and a list of streets for oversized vehicle parking. Please, I urge you to continue. Pacifica is in great need of a safe parking program and a shelter as well as transitional housing so people can have a place to call home where they can feel safe to plan for their future. As you know, San Mateo County has funds available to cities for housing and programs for those needing shelter and case management. The funding has already been successfully used to purchase the Coastside Inn in Half Moon Bay, and I personally know someone who has moved there and is now receiving the support she needs to move forward in her life. As you think and plan for the well-being of Pacifica and all our residents, I will leave you with two questions I hope you will consider. And these two questions are meant to stimulate thoughtfulness as you make important decisions that impact all of our lives. So first, how do we work towards a future in Pacifica where belonging, not stigmatizing people living in their RVs is the norm? And second, how do we infuse compassion into our policies and our culture in Pacifica? Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker is Ellen. Sorry, that was Ellen. Our next speaker is Joanne Rukowski, followed by Jeanne Knight. Joanne, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment. My name is Joanne Rukowski. I am a resident of El Granada and a member of Faith in Action Bay Area. As a co-sider, I am keenly aware of how high, high, high housing costs and limited availability of affordable housing options have impacted residents on the coast side. I believe that we should look for solutions that will provide coordinated benefits for housing-challenged residents throughout our entire coastside area. For example, in Half Moon Bay, the Coastside Inn was purchased late in 2020 in order to provide transitional housing for homeless individuals. Pacifica residents are among current occupants. Thus, the Coastside Inn provides a benefit to homeless residents throughout the coast side. The Coastside Inn is also instructive for the structured services it provides. Active case management is in place with the goal of finding more suitable, permanent housing arrangements. Similarly, there are models for safe parking programs, such as the one described in Redwood City, that provide case management as well as sanitation services. San Mateo County has been clear that individuals and their families need secure housing in order to stabilize their physical, mental, emotional, and social issues. This contributes to the health of the entire community. So I urge the Pacifica City Council to adopt such a program. By doing so, you will be a model for the entire coastside community. And thank you very much for the opportunity.
Our next speaker is Jeanne Knight, followed by Ken Chan. Jeanne, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, my name is Jeanne Knight. Thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking to support a safe parking program, too. We have done so much to help our businesses by, by letting them expand onto the sidewalks and, you know, they, they were so impacted by, and have been, continue to be, by COVID. And we have given them so much support and allowing them to do what they need to, to survive. I just urge us to do the same for our, our fellow residents. They need that same support and a safe parking program. It's also, you know, giving them a place to be safe and to live until they can get through the pandemic and get back on their feet again. And if we can do that for our businesses, let's please do that for our, our residents. Surely, a human life is as important as a business life. So I just, I urge you to look into the safe parking programs and help, help all, everyone get on their feet again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeanne. Our next speaker is Ken Chan, followed by Anita Reese. Ken, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Hello, members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes throughout the peninsula, which includes Pacifica. On behalf of HLC, and as mentioned by some of my fellow commentators previously, I'd like to first thank you for putting together and making available a map that highlights local streets that have accessible legal parking for oversized vehicles and for providing a fact sheet to, to the community. This may serve as a beneficial tool for vehically housed community members and may also assist them in their search for permanent homes. Thank you. I'm here today to express your support for a safe parking program in Pacifica, which has demonstrated its effectiveness, like in Redwood City, in helping our unhoused residents to find homes. Safe parking provides our residents with the benefits of having a safe space to rest, access to hygiene, and case management to help them begin working towards permanent housing. As mentioned in our letter to council, I'd also like to emphasize that many of these individuals have roots that run deep within this community. Many have lived in Pacifica prior to losing their homes. They've gone to, or have had children, who are still attending our local schools, and they continue to work and shop throughout the city. They've been here, and they are our community members. With such a limited availability of affordable housing, this program has the potential to provide our neighbors with a much-needed proverbial bootstraps for them to use and begin taking the needed steps towards finding permanent homes. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Anita Reese, followed by Suzanne Drake. Anita, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I want to thank the city council and city staff for your ongoing support now and throughout the years. We're distributing backpacks, earbuds, PPE, and gift cards for school supplies for Pacifica youth in pre-K through 12th grade through our back-to-school program. If you or someone you know has a student and you need help getting them ready for school, please send them our way. Our grocery programs are changing to buy weekly at the American Legion Hall at 555 Buell. On the second and fourth Wednesdays, groceries are available all other times at our office. So if you or someone you know needs groceries, please contact PRC to sign up for an appointment for the distribution at the American Legion Hall or to schedule a pantry visit. And please note that folks that have a pantry visit, the PRC staff and volunteers will be shopping for you. We will be keeping the pantry closed to the public at least through the end of this year. PRC continues. PRC continues to help folks who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage. Um, we are referring folks to housingiskey.com. People can get uh apply for funding to get a hundred percent of their back rent up to a year paid through August twenty twenty-one. The support along with the extension of the eviction moratorium through September thirtieth will help prevent homelessness for Pacificans behind on their rent due to the pandemic. If you need help applying or need additional information, contact PRC and we can provide support for that. We're also continuing our Unhoused on the Coast outreach work. Please continue to contact our UC Outreach staff by email at ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org or by calling our outreach specialists at six-five-zero-five-seven-five-four-eight-six-one or six-five-zero-three-eight-seven-four-four-five-eight if you know or see someone who's living on the streets in an encampment or in a vehicle. Our office is open Mondays through Fridays, um, our regular office hours, and we can be reached at six-five-zero-seven-three-eight-seven-four-seven-zero or by email at info@pacresourcecenter.org. Thanks.
Thanks, Anita. Our next speaker is Suzanne Drake, followed by Sharon. Suzanne, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, thanks for having me. Um, so I have just a tremendous amount of questions. I thought that uh tonight would include this as far as agenda items, but I must have been mistaken. Um, I I think that there's a tremendous amount of confusion when it comes to the community at large. Um, what happens or what is currently going on with this lawsuit? Um, why all of a sudden do we have streets available when in fact we have an oversized park, uh oversized vehicle parking problem? Some streets just seem far too narrow um with bike lanes, et cetera. Um, so this doesn't quite make sense. I live in the Sharp Park area. Um, certainly the golf course uh has sensitive how, like ha- uh habitats. Um, and it's just basically, you know, around the Sharp Park, uh golf course areas inappropriate for um these kinds of uh activities. Um, there's also questions around safety, around schools, and how does that, you know, play into effect? And if we are to attract developers for affordable housing, how does this affect their impression of investing into our community? And do taxpayers and businesses have rights in this, you know, this whole discussion? Um, we really do need to inform slash educate our residents. Um, should we have, uh, excuse me, um, should then the unhoused like have to work with PRC or have social workers like as a condition of them uh being allowed to be on our streets? Um, I certainly think so. Um, does uh, you know, having ties in Pacifica or graduating from a local high school qualify to park an RV here? Um, Pacifica doesn't have the land or the resources. Uh, is the court aware of the city efforts that we've made over the last few years? And the challenges that we have for land and so forth?
I'm sorry, I need to stop you, Suzanne, um because the two-minute period is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
This is uh, our next speaker is Sharon, followed by Cynthia Kaufman. Sharon, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, this is Sharon Lindsay and I've lived in Pacifica thirty-three years. I really do not believe we should have the RVs living on our residential streets, especially something like Ridgeway Drive, which is used for Little League parking every weekend. We have the walkway on Ridgeway that goes to the back park or so the kids can get their equipment there. And it's always parked up every weekend, every spot. We have been put on the RV parking and there won't be any spaces for the Little League. And that's really necessary. Um, and they promote Pacifica, they're playing wonderful games. And we need to have this under more control. Also, these RV, is anybody picking up their garbage? And what do they do about their sewage control? Because we do not have any available pumping station. So what happens to the garbage and the pumping station? It doesn't sound like it's very helpful for them to live here, let alone it will affect the value of our property, whether anybody wants to talk about that or not. Um, when you have, if you look at these, many of the RVs are not Airstreams. They're pretty rusty and they are not an asset to look at. And the noise that comes from them when they're parked in front of your house is not desirable. They don't, they belong in an RV parking place, not on a residential streets. We need to take them off of the residential streets like Cindy and Ridgeway that are around our park. And by the Garter Snake also, San Francisco Garter Snake is on the golf course. Thank you.
Sharon, our next speaker is Cynthia Kaufman, followed by Cliff Lawrence. Cynthia, you may now meet yourself.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for uh for the opportunity to speak on this. Um, like many others, I wanted to really commend the City Council for the map and the fact sheet. You know, after um that sort of a vote of a prior council to make it much harder for people to live in their RVs in uh Pacifica, I really, really appreciate the forward thinking that's that's starting to happen. And also wanted to agree with a lot of other, what a lot of other folks have said about the need to really proactively work for a safe parking program. Some of the folks who are concerned about this have talked about things like garbage and sewage and it's, you know, if your, if your life is desperate and hard, which when people's lives are desperate and hard, we need to do our best to really help members of our communities. Pacifica passed a thing a while ago saying that we are compassionate city and I think it's so important for us to put our compassion ahead of our concerns for property values. And so um just wanted to say, let's, let's, let's um really be a good compassionate city. Let's follow San Mateo's lead. Let's access that county money and um and and let's find a way to have it be that our people who live in our community whose lives are hard are not made harder by some decisions that we make. Let's try to make their lives easier so that we can all live together and be really good to each other. Um, yeah, so thank you so much and I really do hope to see this on an agenda soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Our next speaker is Cliff Lawrence, followed by Kumar. Cliff, you may now meet yourself.
Uh, this is Cliff Lawrence from uh West Fairmont. I'm very heartened to hear so many speakers tonight speak up on behalf of the Safe Parking Program. We really need to uh up our game with compassion. We've talked about unhousing and uh that task force was uh not really a terrific success uh in that study. But we have a model here. We've got models, plural models. We've got Redwood City. We've got their offer of help. We've got uh assistance offered to us from the county. And we have to have compassion. This is the right thing to do. It is important for the City Council. I certainly hope you hear these calls. Will you hear this need and that you will move expeditiously to find a compassion, compassionate, a safe program uh for the city and for these people. Separately, uh, got another note. Uh, we have a thing called administrative policies, which I knew to find out, and they're not available online. Could we have those made online like we can access the city ordinances? And lastly, uh, I'm anticipating great things in our draft DIR for uh the general plan, but I am getting concerned about timeline here and would like hope to get some new news about that timeline and also uh like to say now, uh, looking forward to seeing that those studies are updated uh because uh that two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen document is a bit stale. So uh, I thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Hey, Cliff. Our next speaker is Kumar, followed by Sue Degree. Kumar, you may now meet yourself.
Uh, hello and thank you. Uh, my name is Kumar Hari. I am the Vice President of Pacifica National Little League and I have been a resident of Pacifica since two thousand three. Uh, our league has been granted access to the baseball fields at Fairway Park for decades. And we utilize those fields for baseball from January through November every year. You know, our league typically operates the season for approximately two hundred fifty to three hundred players. And just a few weeks ago, we ran a baseball tournament for twenty teams from all over the peninsula. You know, and on behalf of the league, I would like to address our concerns regarding oversized vehicle parking on Ridgeway Drive, which, as has been discussed, has direct access to the fields at Fairway Park. And we're deeply empathetic to the needs of those community members living in oversized vehicles and especially appreciative of the City Council's work on this matter thus far. You know, for many years, we've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with the city of Pacifica to offer Little League baseball to kids four to twelve years old. The city has beautifully maintained the grass and playground areas of Fairway, and our league has been responsible for field upkeep and maintenance uh as well as for the snack shack, which includes two restrooms. You know, currently, we we are working hard to fundraise uh to upgrade the fields with better drainage, new scoreboards, and an expanded socializing area for parents to enjoy watching their little ones play baseball. Uh, without adequate access to waste removal and other supportive resources for these oversized vehicles, we're extremely concerned about the additional burden this plan may place on the volunteers that run our league. A number of us have cleaned those restrooms by hand and during the season, our league has pays them to have to be clean. So specifically, the lack of supportive resources along Ridgeway Drive makes us feel that our parents may not want to attend anymore. More importantly, to maintain our charter through Little League International, we're required to run background checks on every volunteer. And safety is a primary concern at PNLL. So I would ask the council to consider these cleanliness, parking, and safety issues as they consider changes to the current OSV parking map because it could have a negative effect on our relationship with Little League International and the baseball community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kumar. Our next speaker is Sue Degree. Sue, I know you had your hand raised up earlier, so if you can please just know if you'd like to speak or if there's someone else on the line that'd like to speak, just to keep the name for the record.
Sue, do you have a word to speak?
Sorry, I thought my hand was down. My apologies.
Thank you, Sue.
No worries, Sue. Our next speaker is Cassie Leonardi, followed by Javier Chavaria. Cassie, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cassie Leonardi. We're residing in the back of the valley. I would like to speak to supporting a joint meeting between City Council and the Planning Commission to discuss the Hillside Preservation District Ordinance. It seems like there's a lot of confusion regarding the HPD and if this would be an opportunity for public, the City Council and the Planning Commission to gain a greater understanding of the implications of this ordinance. Because this implement, this ordinance will be critical in evaluating some of the upcoming development uh proposals within Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Our next speaker is Javier Chavaria. Javier, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, dear members of City Council. My name is Javier Chavaria and I've been a resident of Pacifica for over thirty years. Um, I'm calling uh first to commend you for the efforts that you're doing uh to deal with the situation of the oversized vehicles and RVs and for trying to create a safe parking plan. And I'm calling precisely for that. Uh, I just recently learned that Ridgeway Drive had been designated in for a parking for uh oversized vehicles. And that there are very serious concerns and I'm going to establish why. Ridgeway Drive um only has two hundred feet between intersections between Long Way and Arlene and Cindy Way. That only leaves a less than twenty feet between the hundred-foot prohibition that the Pacifica Municipal Code establishes for no parking. So the only viable area would be beyond uh Cindy Way all the way to the end of Ridgeway. Ridgeway does not enjoy a full fire truck turnaround. If an emergency were to occur in there with vehicles parked along the side, it would be a disaster. As if you have a large vehicles parked in one side and regular vehicles parked on the other side, only leaves twenty feet of circulation. Having vehicles of large size parking in there will be detrimental for the public safety. It will be a serious mistake. I urge you to reconsider that situation. In addition, I support the comments of the previous speakers about Little League. I was involved for many years there. And the bike line that is contemplated on the bicycle pedestrian master plan is of utmost importance for the functioning of the league and the safety of our children. So please reconsider removing Ridgeway Drive from the list because of the safety concerns that I had, that I have just expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Our next speaker is Robert Fazaro. Robert, I see your name on twice as another hand raised. Please confirm if there'll be two separate speakers. You may now meet yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, uh, that was from a previous call. The the one hand is fine. So I'm just uh, I'm just chiming in here uh on the RV parking. I hear a lot about Ridgeway. Uh, my concern and many of the neighbors is the uh the section of Paloma between Malagran Sierra Terrace, which is kind of interesting because uh that street is, there's a high school on the street. There's a preschool in the high school. There's a co-op two blocks away. And we have soccer games, joggers, dog walkers, and the uh the kids that uh run down Paloma uh during PE for school. And then, of course, kids coming and going to school. So there are a lot of concerns about that particular section uh being on the map. It should, it shouldn't be a question of it being removed. It should, shit should be removed for safety concerns and reasoning. I mean, obvious reasons. There's, there's, there's nothing but kids on that street. So that's uh I I would, I would definitely urge that that street be removed. And that's, that's about it. I I don't, I didn't hear anyone else mention that particular block, but it's that whole stretch of Paloma between Malagran and Sierra Terrace. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Speaker is Monica, followed by Raimi Tan. Monica, you may now meet yourself. Monica, building Soloski, you may now meet yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, sorry. Okay, sorry.
Monica, quick some feedback on your line. Um, it seems like you might have two, two devices going or maybe the the meeting is playing on another device in the background. I'm going to ask that you um see about limiting yourself to one device and maybe call us right back. Could you go on to the next caller, please? Um, Mr. Montemeyer.
I'm there. Our next speaker is Raimi Tan, followed by Michael Bernaza. Raimi, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, uh, this is Raimi Tan, uh, an architect here at the Pacific Manor, a longtime Pacifica resident. I agree with a lot of the other speakers, um, you know, commend the City Council on, you know, addressing this uh oversized vehicle parking. Um, but I think, you know, we need to have uh solutions for the trash issue and the uh sewage dumping issue. And we actually have the solutions right at hand. We have an RV park that that's right uh conveniently located right off the freeway. And uh be very easy for those RVs uh to pay a small dump fee or you know, the owners are unemployed, that could be subsidized uh to make sure that there's no uh sewage dump dumping on on any of the land in Pacifica. And there should be some trash bins located in those, you know, in the areas where where the oversized parking is um proposed because that's a huge issue and other sites. And again, the, you know, the permit fee for the oversized parking could subsidize the uh uh trash pickups or, you know, if they're unemployed, you know, that could be, you know, subsidized by the city. And and you'll pay for the subsidies for unemployed, you know, we could have uh the the tourists who drive those really expensive motorhomes in the RV park. They could pay an extra transittacability tax and they know that their money's going for um, you know, a very good cause. Um, we also need to enforce, you know, illegal dumping and and sewage dumping. The other thing I'd like to say, we need to get the pier fixed. Again, I think we can, you know, levy some user fees. It's really popular among fishermen, and, you know, we've got to make sure the fishermen's clean up. And the last thing is the HPD. We need to make sure that future projects are not visible on the ridge lines. We already messed up on the Harmony One project, and there are a couple of other ones that haven't been approved yet. So we need to watch out for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Our next speaker is Michael, followed by Mark Hubbell. Michael, you may now meet yourself.
Hello. Thank you for the time this evening. Just wanted to make a comment in regards to how much different geographically and economically Pacifica is compared to places like Redwood City or San Francisco. Though the county may give us some money to buy a hotel, it doesn't give us the money to sustain the management of these services. You know, we got sued by somebody that moved here in nineteen ninety-four and was never a productive member of the community. And I just get nervous for our city to be able to, in a sustainable way, take care of these people. What is the affordable housing? Is it five hundred bucks a room? Is it a thousand bucks a room? I would love to work with the Resource Center and get these people decent jobs, whether it's within my company or others within my network. I think it's imperative to take care of the people that were born and raised here. And, you know, I believe wholeheartedly in taking care of people, but this stuff takes money, and I hope we can figure out a way that makes sense. But right now, I know we have our financial challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speaker is Michael Hubbell, followed by Phil Lindsay. Mark, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, my name is Mark Hubbell. I've lived in Pacifica since nineteen eighty-seven. And three things real quickly. First, I do support the safe parking for the RVs. I think that's very important, and I think it's a really good program that they have in Redwood City. Secondly, I would like to get a real, I think the citizens of Pacifica do deserve a definition of the hillside preservation policies that we seem to have followed in the past, but maybe not so much in the future, and I'd like to know why. And lastly, the general plan. Shouldn't the city, shouldn't the citizens of Pacifica be engaged with that already? I mean, it seems like what was done was done before the issues of sea level rise and the fires and all these other things, and it doesn't make much sense to go back that far. Otherwise, thank you for your service. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And we have one final hand raised by Phil Lindsay. Phil, you may now meet yourself. Phil Lindsay, you may now speak.
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm sorry. Okay, I've lived here forty years. My concern is that the RV is not a device for storing homeless people. An RV is designed for vacations, areas that are parks that are designed to handle RVs with sewage disposal, waste disposal, electricity, water. The streets of Pacifica have none of those features. And so people in their RVs cram into the RV, sit at the curbside, and have zero services. What does that mean to their quality of life? Certainly nothing like they would have in a hotel room, nothing that they would have with that RV being parked in a park with facilities. Curbside parking in residential areas is not the answer. It's not even kind to the people in the RV, let alone the people around the RV. So something has to be done to provide that RV a quality life. If the RV is going to be on the street, then the city of Pacifica, or the county of San Mateo, or perhaps even the federal government, has to come up and address, how do you handle sewage? How do you handle the things that give these people a decent style of life? I haven't seen any of that. I see a map, a map drawn in such a way that a person can't even look at the map and tell which side of the street it's okay to park on. I assume it's okay on both sides of the street, which is absurd. Look at the streets, look at RVs on either side. It doesn't work. So our map hasn't been done carefully. It's a crude, very quick thing. We need much, much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Madam Mayor, we have no more hands raised at this time.
What about the caller that we cut off? The lack of better.
Looking at the list, I don't see Monica's name anymore.
If you do see her, maybe, you know, and at some point, if you see her again, we should let her share.
I do see a hand raised by Richard Harris. Richard, you may now meet yourself. Richard Harris, you may now meet yourself. Do you wish to speak?
There seems to be some problem with the audio. Oh, there you go.
Thank you. I sent a five-page letter that I asked you to look at at page, it's twenty-two, twenty-four of your communications package. I am a resident of San Francisco. I'm president of the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. We have about seven thousand members, many hundreds in Pacifica. The Bradford Street parking, we believe, is in violation of the local coastal plan. The golf course is environmentally sensitive. The wetlands are very famously environmentally sensitive and recognized as such in both the nineteen eighty local coastal plan and the current draft coastal plan that is before the Coastal Commission. I've given you on page three of the letter that I sent, a map of Pacifica's sewer, storm sewer system, which empties onto the golf course into the wetland and into Laguna Salada. The oversized vehicle parking designation is essentially a form of change of use from driving to quasi-residential, which has many issues. And that is governed by your local coastal plan. I've given you this in detail in the letter that I've sent and request that you look it through carefully with the city engineer, police, and planning. Thank you very much, and we recognize that this, as many things you deal with, is a difficult issue. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Seeing any further hands, and I'm going to close public comment. If any of the callers who were trying to reach us before would be so kind as to email us, the city council, you can get in touch with our city clerks, their coffee. If you need instruction on how to find us through email, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I can provide that information right now. Any that wish to provide a written comment by email can email that to publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Great. Thank you for that, city clerk coffee. All right. Including our communications brings us to council communications. Who would like to begin? And I'm sorry, right now, my screen is strange, and I can't see everybody.
As usual, I have raised my hand if you'd like.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just try and keep track of my own time here, although after a month, heaven knows I have a little on my mind. And starting with very, very briefly, because I really hadn't intended on making any comments, but after that outpouring from folks on the topic that we really can't talk about, I figured I'd just acknowledge the elephant in the room, that as a result of pending litigation, there's not much we can say at present, and that I am aware how frustrating that is, because it's also frustrating for me and I imagine my fellow council members. And as soon as we can talk at length, I think we're looking forward to that opportunity, and Ridgeway Drive, along with all other streets in Pacifica, are firmly on our mind. That having been said, I was also rather heartened by how many folks, and it's oftentimes when folks from outside the community come in, it's not the most pleasant feeling. But tonight, to have people essentially reaching out in lieu of an attempt to help, it just made me feel that perhaps somewhere in here, there might be an opportunity for appreciation of a greater unity than usually we're accustomed to thinking in terms of. And so that, for me, was a very heartening experience. As per my usual, I went to Perfect Pour this morning with a friend of mine and enjoyed a coffee and a pastry, a chai latte, actually. And I was delighted to discover that my very favorite Japanese restaurant, Kaneko-san, in the Crespi Center, has been open for a few months. And I was annoyed that I did not realize that until recently, and overjoyed that they are still in business and that I got to enjoy them. I was the liaison to Economic Development Committee in absence of Mr. O'Neill and Mayor Beckmeyer. Cindy Abbott and Ray Ernest talked about the age-friendly business program, which was fascinating. Kathleen Courtney sadly has stepped down from economic development, but her service has been greatly appreciated, and she will be missed. Next meeting for EDC is tomorrow night. Emergency preparedness, I attended. The San Mateo County Parks Director Nicholas Calderon gave a wonderful presentation about the five-year wildfire fuel management program, of which three point five million dollars in projects are on the list for San Pedro Valley Park, one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five of which is for fourteen acres of defensible space along the San Pedro Valley Park boundary with residences. And the next meeting there is on eight eighteen, August eighteenth. The next Peninsula Clean Energy meeting is on August twenty-sixth. Last month's meeting was canceled. I got to enjoy the Council of Cities meeting in Milbury with council member Vatterlaus. We got to see Jackie Spear speak, which is always a treat. And we got to tour the transit corridor, affordable housing mixed-use project, big, beautiful project. Speaking for myself, got to salivate a little bit over that project, perhaps who did also. If I could take just an extra moment, there were a couple of things that happened that were both inspiring, and I know that I'm at a three-minute mark. Will you allow me an extra moment, Madam Mayor?
I will exceed some of my time to you, because I don't have much to report. Please go ahead.
You're very kind. Thank you. I received news about three weeks ago that, you know, I have a best friend lives in Oklahoma. She has a couple of daughters. They're basically like nieces to me. And I would plaster the photo of my essentially little niece on oxygen, because she had contracted COVID, if I could to make my point, although that might be in bad taste. But suffice to say, my very good friend, who through the counsel of her doctors, was navigating when to get vaccinated, because she was pregnant and trying to find the right moment. And finally, she got her first shot, contracted COVID, and then the entire family. Fortunately, everyone's quite okay now. It was quite a battle for several weeks, since these are little girls who mean a great deal to me. I wanted to take the opportunity to just remind folks, please get vaccinated. We have the county mask mandate back in force. It's about everybody around you at the end of the day. You ain't doing this for you. You're doing it for folks like my friends and my little nieces, who I get to see on oxygen masks when we don't do this together. And please consult with your doctor if you have doubts. Please, please at least talk to your own doctor if you have doubts. In good news, council member O'Neill pointed me in the direction of a tour of Atherton's new city hall, police station project, and their new library project. And seeing what a new civic center looks like, what it looks like when facilities are fully accessible to the public, and when they're not crumbling to the ground around you when you first step into the building, it was amazing to see what it actually looks like in a soon-to-be-functional facility, and that was really heartening. And then stepping into their library, which is still in the works and probably a lot further along by now, what really solidified for me was the way a modern library becomes a focal point of socializing communally, that in yesteryear, it wasn't necessarily as much a focal point of social congregation on the one hand, and on the other hand, as we start going into the world of our cell phones, it was really driven home to me how important that is to have those places where we can be a community. And so I'll be happy to elaborate on that later. The last thing I wanted to touch on, because other council members specifically might be interested, recently, it was brought to my attention and my understanding as other council members' attention about the Otztad Workforce Housing Project. There have been issues in getting back to some communications in a timely fashion. There was enough concern from council that we were all mailed an update from city manager. And one of staff also, whom I spoke to, was very regretful that things weren't moving at the pace we would like it to be. You know, speakers have been talking about the general plan update tonight, which is one of the big things that hopefully we're right on the cusp of finishing, along with Shore Park specific plan, and on and on and on. But this, to me, is a big enough item that's been on the back burner for so long, one way or the other, that the news that we're not responding as quickly as we'd hopefully probably like to, I just wanted to present the idea that, because this was just brought to my attention, it may not be the worst idea to, maybe in the next meeting, just listen to what our priorities are right now. And for me, this one's toward the top of the list, and I wanted to present that idea that perhaps we agendize on the next meeting to see if we can get it higher up on the list. If right now, we're having difficulty because of a very long list of, you know, just talking about the outdoor thing tonight. After this, is research and outreach, and God bless the Coastal Commission, if they help us out with that by the end of the year, you know, and heaven only knows. And that's one item. So if anyone else has interest in trying to figure out how to get this higher up on the list, I wanted to present that idea, and thank you for allowing me this much time. Thank you.
Very much. Who would like to go next?
I think O'Neill would like to go next.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm, thank you. I was gone. My daughter got married in July, so that's where I was most of the month. So that was kind of cool. Up in Seattle, it was nice to see a place that has a lot of water, real big. Lake Shasta, because Lake Shasta has none on the way down. But I just wanted to reiterate, I'd like to have an item on the agenda to look at the council priorities in regards to the planning staff allocation of time. I also wanted to urge everybody to get a COVID shot, get the vaccination. Even if you do get, even if you get it, you have a breakthrough, you're still have less, less, you know, hurt and pain than if you didn't have COVID, the COVID shot. But I also wanted to just remind everybody that schools are open. The high school district opened today. Pacifica School District will be opening, I think, Monday or Tuesday next week. So the kids will be out, so please plan your trip accordingly in terms of looking at crosswalks, little beings will be running around excited to see their friends, maybe wearing a mask over their eyes or whatever. So please be careful when you So please be careful when you drive. Also be mindful of the traffic that will be ensnared in due because of the additional traffic and parents driving kids to school. Other than that, all my county meetings kind of were shut down for the month of July, traditional summer break here in San Mateo County. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you very much.
Sue Vatalas is next.
Thank you. I went to the Fairmont Homeowners Association Meeting, which is always interesting, and we do updates. I went to the badge pending ceremony in person with North Coast County Fire. And there is a large group of new fire people who got their badges, and several of them missed out because of the COVID. And now they all got their, they had a really nice badge ceremony. It was quite nice to attend in person. I attended the Democrats in person, and there was a union, two different union representatives talking about history and current union issues. I went to the, an emergency flood sea level rise, meaning it was just mainly about collecting fees. I also attended the Council of Cities in Milbury, which was nice to see these huge developments that Milbury is doing right next to Bard. And also to listen to Jackie Spear, she was pretty positive. And I went to the opening of the Magic Toy Box, which is in Eureka Square. Apparently we have two new toy stores, one in Lindemar and one in Eureka Square. And I hear we have a Wingstop in Lindemar. I haven't been there, but please try to go to as many meetings as possible. I mean, sorry, see, I'm stuck on meetings. As many businesses as possible. I had the COVID Recovery Council Meeting, which we used to have every other week, but now we're having them about once a month or every six weeks. And there were some interesting statistics, and I'm going to give you some. They may not be accurate to the number, because I don't have them in front of me. But there are only 500 breakthrough cases out of 17,000 cases. San Mateo County is 92% vaccinated, which is totally incredible, because California is only about 53%. Now, Pacifica, I was surprised to see that we're not in the top of the list, because we are only at 82%. So I'm going to reiterate what the other council member said, and please, it would be great if everyone could get vaccinated. I know so many people who have passed and so many people who almost passed because of it. And I just urge people to, yes, I agree, talk to your doctor and find out. But talk to your doctor and, and see about getting it. Also, we do have a testing site on Sundays. If you need to be tested, I think that the testing is going to ramp up quite a bit with this new development, and that is on Sunday. We always call it the Thai parking lot, but the lot across from Little Brown Church. See, there's another, that's a historical society. And they do have a testing service available there. And if you have a group of 25 or more, you can contact the county, and the county will come to your site to vaccinate 25 or more people. And that's not a difficult process. They're doing it all the time now. They are trying to get into any place they can. So thank you all who have been vaccinated, and I'm hoping that more people can be vaccinated. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and piggyback on that vaccination thing, because I am in quarantine right now, because I was directly exposed to COVID. And so, you know, bubbles can be broken, and, and we never really know when we're going to be exposed. You know, and so I'm waiting and waiting for my test result. Has it come yet? I must have checked the app, I don't even know how many times. But it's, it's not gone, COVID is not gone. So please, wear your mask, take care of each other. So yeah, that's, that's a big deal. I feel like I did a lot of things in the past month, but one thing I wanted to hit on is there's two young people, Annie and Lauren, who have a grant Splash of Color, who are painting the wall by Eureka Square. So we got some really cool pictures of them out there. It's looking beautiful. So thank you to the Beautification Committee for meeting with them and approving their project. They learned all about city processes in this thing, so it's a win-win. It's beautiful. Let's see, so I attended the Seamless Allies Roundtable, which is Seamless Transit Bay Area. Assemblymember Two was facilitating that meeting, and we talked about fair integration and unified equitable fair systems and regional funding measures. I attended the United Against Hate Meeting, where there was 40 people from around the region. So we're looking at, they have a community toolkit we're going to be looking at. We'll be talking about that more and more as we get closer to November, so we can see what our city can do in collaboration with hopefully some of our community groups, like Pacifica Peace People. You never know, just thought I would throw that one out there. I attended the Thrive Leadership Circle, and we learned about San Mateo County's new equity framework. I met with Tree City Pacifica, and I'm going to be meeting with Tree City Pacifica regularly, because I'm learning all about the best practices for the tree ordinances. So I'm going to be talking about trees a lot. I met with the Sierra Club, and we, they're very concerned about divesting from fossil fuels and weapons and the Climate Action Plan. I attended the Open Space Meeting, and there's just so much going on in open space. And I feel like they talked about Maury Point. They talked about the trail naming. There's just so many projects going on in open space. They're working really hard, and so I feel like I don't have my notes right in front of me. Sorry, Open Space Committee. I think that's about, oh, you know what I was wanting to say? Is Michael Vernaza, who offered jobs in his company, really, Michael, get ahold of Anita Reese and partner with her. It's not very often when people come on and talk about things that they offer a solution. So thank you, Michael, for offering a solution.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. And I would like to specifically thank you for mentoring the two young women who are working on the mural. That was something that Mayor Protem Beer and I discussed months, a few months ago, as the process unfolded. And they worked with the Beautification Advisory Committee Mural Subcommittee. And it was a very, as Mayor Protem said, it was a very instructive process for them. But I think we ended up with a very positive outcome. The original location that was proposed didn't work. There are a lot of issues around that, but it's such a successful story, and I'm really pleased about that. The mural work at the pump house on the beach continues at Lindemar Beach, but they're engaged in fundraising, so that each mural won't be started until there's enough funds to complete it. And that is the four murals on all four sides of that building. I did want to, I'm sure City Manager Woodhouse would be addressing this, but I did want to take a minute to acknowledge Julie Finkling, who was our former Pacifica Library Director, who has accepted a position in Foster City. So she's still around, but not in Pacifica. And her, the new director of Pacifica is Elise Staples, who I have not met yet. I'm very much looking forward to meeting her, and it's exciting to know that she is a Pacifica resident. So she'll be managing the two libraries in Pacifica as well as Milbury. So looking forward to meeting her. Thank you to Councilmember Big Stick for attending Economic Development Committee. The next meeting is tomorrow. We'd love to have you back if you're so inclined. And really do appreciate you stepping in while I was out of town, which I have been more, it seems, of the summer than not, although very much keeping up with email. And I want to reiterate that we get a lot of email. We receive a lot of email, and we do our best to respond, but it doesn't always happen, or it doesn't always happen on the timely basis that we would like. So I'm asking please for people's patience on that. And in the same vein, I'm excited, and I'm sure City Manager Woodhouse will give us some updates on our civic center transition and relocation of staff. But again, I'm going to ask for patience on the kinds of responses that you're looking for sometimes from city departments, because we're in transition, and, and people are doing a really good job and trying very hard. And please understand that it's all coming from a good place. And that's all I have to say. So thank you, and we'll give it over to City Manager Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Protem Beer, and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just have a few updates that I'll provide. As the mayor mentioned, Elise Staples from San Mateo County Libraries is the new Pacifica Libraries Manager, in addition to managing Milbury Libraries. So thank you for mentioning that. The civic center transition has gone smoothly. We're still settling in with the new systems at the back of the community center, and hopefully the customer service and our responsiveness has been seamless and transparent to the public during that transition. And our information systems technology division and public works and the community center staff here have just done a great job at facilitating all of that transition. I did want to point out and announce the good news that the city did receive a new $40,000 grant from Caltrans to develop a local roadway safety plan. This was a grant opportunity that was actually brought to our attention from a community member, Rick Nahas, back in April. And public works staff pursued it and has a small city matching component to it, but will be pursuing the development of that local roadway safety plan, which is the type of plan that should be in place to then qualify us for future grants for safety improvements in the future. So we're excited to, to have received that. Finally, I did want to mention that just earlier, or I guess at the end of last week, Congresswoman Spear, again jointly with Congresswoman S U, sent a letter to Lieutenant General Scott Spelman, who's the commanding general of the US Army Corps of Engineers, encouraging the funding of the Pacifica Shoreline Study be put into the president's budget for next year. So our representatives are working hard on that. I know Congresswoman Spear's staff will be meeting with the Army Corps staff to discuss this more. And, you know, believe it or not, the budget process at federal level begins now for the next year. And we're hoping that that, that study does get funded. So I'll be passing that letter along, I just received today, to the council. That completes my updates.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we are now moving to our public hearing and items for consideration. And I'm going to ask for a brief break at this point before we start our public hearing. Thank you very much, Deputy Planning Director Burdock. I saw you just flash on right there. It's 9:05, could we please come back at 9:10? Thank you. The meeting is going to start with a public hearing, Agenda Item 13. We're going to do a slightly different procedure because there are two appellants. And those two appellants, as I understand, have elected to jointly provide their presentation. And our Assistant Planning Director Christian Murdock is going to provide the staff report. We also have with us Commissioner Jim Godwin, who is present. He's from the Planning Commission and is available to counsel to answer any questions that we may have. The representing applicant is Bijan Krasavi. And Javier Traveria will be representing the applicant as well. And the appellants are Christine Bowles, Dinah Verbi, Rich Campbell, and Summer Lee. So I'm going to turn it over to Christian Murdock and city attorney or city clerk coffee, if there are instructions that you need to give us and break in, please do. But we will be having public comment later, after the presentations. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. This evening's public hearing involves consideration of two appeals filed in opposition to the Planning Commission's approval of this project on April fifth, twenty twenty one. Planning Commissioner Jim Godwin, as already mentioned, is here this evening as the Planning Commission's liaison. The two appellants each had separately submitted various objections to the Planning Commission's approval in their initial appeals. However, the two appellants and the applicant have reached a private agreement to address nearly all of the issues identified in the appeals. And the appellants have now combined their appeals to jointly pursue the single issue discussed in the staff report. None of the other issues remain for the City Council to resolve. The Planning Commission's April fifth approval consisted of a specific plan for construction of a four thousand two hundred ninety-three square foot, one-story, single-family residence. The Planning Commission made the findings for approval of this project by adopting Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five. The remaining basis for the joint appeals focuses on condition of approval number nine of that resolution. As explained in more detail in the staff report, staff recommends granting the appeal in part to modify condition of approval number nine. The modification would align the condition with the commitments made by the applicant to design the project to obtain sufficient points to obtain lead gold certification, as well as one hundred points on the Greenpoint rating system. This modification would not conflict with the applicable requirement established in condition of approval number twenty-seven of the Harmony One project approvals from two thousand and seven, and would allow the applicant to resolve this remaining issue identified by the appellants. Should the council support staff's recommendation regarding the modification to condition number nine, then any approval motion should correct the content of condition number nine as printed in the agenda packet to read as follows. As proposed by the applicant, in prior to issuance of a building permit, the project shall be designed and constructed to attain all necessary points to achieve lead gold certification and to achieve at least one hundred points on the Greenpoint rating system, subject to the satisfaction of the Planning Director. Part of the applicant's private agreement with the appellants to resolve their various concerns involved the revision to the project approved by the Planning Commission. The revised project plans are included in Attachment K on Packet Page six seventy-three. The revised project generally consists of a slight reduction in floor area to four thousand two hundred sixty-four square feet, moving the project about thirty feet to the north closer to a loney drive with a slight counterclockwise rotation of the building, and shifting one of the bedrooms on the southern wing of the structure to the east, rather than at the southern end of the single-family residence where it was in the plans approved by the Planning Commission. Otherwise, the architecture and site improvements proposed by the revised project are nearly identical to the project approved by the Planning Commission. Staff recommends granting approval to the revised project as it would be consistent with the Planning Commission's original approval and would facilitate the private resolution of a number of issues discussed and agreed to by the applicant and appellants. Staff also recommends adopting the addendum to the Harmony One Environmental Impact Report, or E I R, to comply with the environmental review requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or C Q A. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions from council? For staff? No, I'm not seeing any. No, all right. Then we will have our appellants speak, and as I understand it, they're going to combine their time. So it's twenty minutes for opening presentations with six minutes of rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, we would like to confirm with the appellants if they do want to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Okay.
And then we want to find out how much time they want to reserve.
So I think we need to promote our appellants so they're part of the panel. Is that accurate, City Clerk Coffee?
Yes, we are bringing over the appellants to the panel in order to provide their presentation. We have, we have all four of our appellate team as panelists right now. That consists of Christine Bowles, Dinah Verbi, Summer Lee, and Richard Campbell. They'll be presenting together a combined presentation. They have a PowerPoint that they'll be presenting.
And is there, City Clerk, is there one person in the appellate group that will be the spokesperson when the mayor has questions of the group?
I'll defer to the appellate team to identify the spokesperson.
Just before you do that, can I ask if Rich Campbell is fully on the panel? I don't see him. Are you there, Rich?
Yes, it looks like he just has his video off.
There we go.
Hello, welcome. All right, sorry, back to appellate panel. Who will be the spokesperson?
I guess Dinah Verbi here, I guess I will be the spokesperson. And to answer the earlier question, we, the four of us, will be presenting different portions of the presentation. We hope to reserve a few minutes at the end. You know, whatever time we have left over, we'll reserve.
Okay, so my understanding is there will be twenty minutes and and you would wish to reserve how many minutes at the end?
Well, we're hoping it'll be at least three, depending on how tight we are with our opening comments.
So you would wish to have the city clerk announce when you've hit minute seventeen, so that there's still three minutes remaining?
Well, Madam Mayor, the the question is really, do they want to take the full twenty minutes for their opening presentation? If they do, they can, but that means they would only have six minutes for rebuttal.
Oh, so we get six minutes over.
You get you get six minutes for rebuttal.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yes, we would like the full six minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, so you don't need to reserve any of the twenty-minute time. You'll just keep the twenty minutes for the presentation and six minutes for rebuttal. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. All right.
And Ms. Verbi, before I begin the pull up your presentation and share the screen, I just want to go over. I will have a twenty-minute timer running, but that will not be visible on screen. I'll be able to prompt you at the two-minute mark, two minutes remaining, if that is sufficient for you.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. And and then just prompt me for when to transition between your slides and you each are welcome to transition between speakers as you see fit.
Thank you. So Rich Campbell is actually going to be the first one to speak.
All right, may I start?
Go ahead, yes, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor Beckmeyer, members of the City Council and Commissioner Godwin. My name is Rich Campbell and I was a planning commissioner for the city from two thousand and seven until last year. I'm one of the appellants, and to be clear, I'm representing only myself. As a preliminary matter, I want to express my appreciation to Bijan Krasavi, the project applicant, for his efforts to resolve this matter. I believe Bijan has a genuine interest in ensuring the Harmony One development conforms to city code and is built in an environmentally sustainable manner. And I also want to thank city staff for engaging with us on bringing this project back into conformance with city requirements. Slide two, please. So allow me to provide some background briefly in late briefly. In late two thousand and seven, after several planning commission and city council meetings, the Harmony One developer obtained approvals to undertake the subdivision. The hearings were standing room only. There was a lot of public interest, probably the most I've seen in my thirteen years as a planning commissioner. And why was that? It was because of development, in part was a test of our hillside preservation district ordinance. Pacifica prizes its open space. It's why people love living here and invest in our town. And it's what makes Pacifica different than towns we are surrounded by. Slide three, please. So turning to the map, we see the light green area on these maps indicates HPD zoning and the red area indicates the prominent ridge lines where development should generally not occur pursuant to the HPD. So after multiple planning commission and city council meetings back in two thousand and seven, the city reached an agreement with the Harmony One developers that required, in relevant part here, to keep the homes off the HPD prominent ridge line and build the lead. And since Pacifica has an inclusionary zoning ordinance, the master developer agreed to build two below-market-rate affordable homes and dedicate a two-acre lot near the post office on Roberts Road for affordable housing. We had a good deal, a good deal, in my opinion, and I voted for this project. Soon after approval, we began to see that the master developer began to back off the deal. The master developer asked to pay an in-luck fee instead of building the affordable housing, and so no affordable housing was built, unfortunately. Next, we had the city agree to backing off the lead requirement. And I'll leave that lead issue to my co-appellants to discuss. Slide four, please. Then we had the city agree to moving the proposed home from the location we'd agreed upon in two thousand and seven off the prominent ridge line directly onto what we considered to be the prominent ridge line back in two thousand and seven. Slide five, please. Now, as the city may explain, the prominent ridge line likely encompasses more area than what was understood in two thousand and seven, and admittedly, better lines need to be drawn that conform with contour lines and the such. This whole area, it turns out, may be a prominent ridge line. In any case, the city did not present any of its reasoning to the Planning Commission on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one on this point. None of it's in the record, and thus, you, the city councils, as well as the planning commission, were without the information you needed to make an informed decision. So I joined with my co-appellants in appealing the Planning Commission's decision to send this project to you for approval. Fortunately, we're dealing with a very reasonable and patient project applicant, and the applicant has agreed to move the homesight back off what everyone understood in two thousand and seven was the prominent ridge line and to correct some HPD site coverage calculations that we also discovered during this process. These actions will serve to bring the project back into conformance with the HPD. And assuming the city finds these modifications acceptable, for these reasons, I've dropped my appeal, with the exception of a lead issue to be discussed tonight. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate what you all do up there. Slide six is next, and now I'd like to introduce my co-appellant, Christine Bowles.
Thank you, Rich, and good evening, council members and staff. My name is Christine Bowles, and I'm a licensed architect. While I did not have much time to review the staff report before the Planning Commission hearing in early April, I did make public comments regarding a few items that did not meet the original subdivision conditions of approval. These include mandatory green building aspects, like the use of recycled gray water, and the fact that the subdivision, per the condition of approval thirty-one, was supposed to have an architectural control committee with a licensed architect and biologist reviewing and approving the plans for each home prior to coming before the Planning Commission. I also pointed out apparent floor area discrepancies on the drawings. The project was approved nonetheless, with only Commissioner Ferguson voting no. Subsequent to the hearing, I was asked by former Mayor Sue DeGruy to look into the project's hillside preservation or HPD compliance. While the HPD issues have been resolved through our productive collaboration with the owner, Bijan Krasavi, we feel it is important to document to you why these changes were required in order to explain the project revisions detailed in the staff report. Pacifica's HPD regulations are part of our municipal code, Article twenty-two point five. The intent of HPD is clearly explained: to place special controls on any proposed development, public or private, within hillside areas of the city in order to preserve and enhance their use as a prime resource and to help protect people and property from all potentially hazardous conditions, particular to hillsides. While some of the discussion in the HPD ordinance is somewhat vague and up to interpretation by the decision-making bodies of the Planning Commission and ultimately you as the city council, the this section regarding land coverage is quite clear and includes a precise mathematical formula and a graph. Next slide, please. On the bottom of the graph is the average slope of the land, which is calculated by the civil engineer based on the steepness of the site and the size of the parcel. A higher number means a greater slope and increased danger, so the allowed development area naturally decreases. On a flat site with zero percent slope, you're allowed to disturb forty percent of the site. As you move to the right, the slope and the slope increases, you're allowed to disturb less and less. And at about thirty-eight percent, you are not allowed any disturbance. There are some minor exceptions to these rules, but none of them apply to this project. The HPD ordinance defines what counts as coverage or disturbed area. On the right here, you'll you'll see it says site coverage, C, shall include all areas of site occupied or covered by buildings, pavement, and grading. All areas not considered coverage shall remain undisturbed in their native or natural state. This last phrase implies that landscaping also counts as disturbance. Next slide, please. This is the drawing showing HPD disturbed area in the original application by Mr. Chavaria that came before the Planning Commission. On the top right are the calculations per the staff report. So you'll see the maximum disturbance areas fourteen thousand seven twenty and the actual disturbance areas fourteen eight fifty-one. And that is twenty-three percent of the site that can be disturbed. And we're not questioning that number. The staff report said that the project designed was one hundred and thirty square feet over the maximum and called for paved areas of this amount to be removed. The next slides will demonstrate that the proposed HPD coverage was actually much greater. Next slide, please. This slide shows the discrepancy in the drawings highlighted in yellow. The engineer's hardscape and landscape plan showed more paving and more retaining walls that were on his drawings with the calculations. Next slide, please. This next drawing adds site drainage highlighted in blue. All of these would require additional grading to place the drainage areas. Next slide, please. And this last slide shows the extent of the landscaping work, which alters the terrain from its native natural state. I haven't done the math, but as you can see by the yellow, blue, and green, the project as originally designed nearly doubles the allowable disturbance area. After we filed our appeals, Bijan, the owner of the project, contacted us to try to understand our concern. We went over them one by one, and he was generally surprised. He did not fully understand the HPD ordinance and said he would have gladly complied if he had known. The five of us worked together over the next several months, along with his engineer, to redesign the project and bring it into compliance. Next slide, please. The revised HPD calculation diagram on this new design, where the house moved closer to the road, many of the design, many of the drainage elements are moved under the already disturbed driveway, and the additional landscaping is minimized. You'll note that the wing on the right was also rotated off the red line, the prominent ridge line. We're grateful to Bijan for working with us and glad that he feels the design was actually improved in the process. The major drawback to him was the delay, as he hoped to be under construction by now. As we were able to resolve these issues with Bijan, we removed them as terms of our appeal. But we thought it was important to tell the story of what happened in the hope that we can avoid this process with the next home and with future projects with HPD zoning. Our appeal today is focused on the green building requirements and the original conditions of approval for this subdivision, which was intended to be a showcase of sustainability and which Summer Lee and Dinah Verbi will present next. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Christine. My name is Summer Lee, and I've lived in Pacifica for over twenty years. Appellants are very pleased that we have entered an agreement with the project applicant to revise the project in a way that meets the requirements of the HPD ordinance. We are also pleased that Bijan has agreed to comply with the original condition of approval twenty-seven for this subdivision by building this project to attain all points necessary to achieve lead gold certification and a hundred green points, which may overlap. Appellants agree with the staff recommendation to grant the appeals in part and to modify new condition nine to conform to the parties' agreement. And we urge the council to adopt Option B with certain modifications, because this project is the first of eleven or twelve homes to be built at a loney point. We want to present the concerns that led to the appeal, so there will be consistency and clarity regarding the meaning of original condition twenty-seven for all future homes. Next slide. Condition of Appeal Nine in the Planning Commission Resolution materially alters Condition of Appeal Nine in the Planning Commission Resolution materially alters, conflicts with, and/or eliminates Original Condition Twenty-seven by only requiring the project to score one hundred green points rather than meet the LEED gold standard required by the city council in two thousand and seven and reaffirmed by the council in two thousand and fifteen. Next slide. The basis of our appeal is conditions of approval set legal standards which must be uniformly applied. Why are conditions of approval important? Conditions of approval are legal standards that a project, and in this case, every development inside a subdivision must conform to in order to obtain approval by a governing body. In two thousand and seven and two thousand and fifteen, there was a significant public process to come to a consensus on a loanee point. What would be major development project for Pacifica, both for the size of the land and its visibility and impact on Pacifica's diverse and sensitive ecologies? The agreements made among the public, decision-makers, and developers that emerged from this process were hard-won, and they included an agreement to build to environmentally sustainable standards. Some of you present tonight deliberated and voted to approve these conditions of approval back in those years. We are here tonight because a few months ago, Condition Twenty-seven was essentially gutted at a planning commission meeting with no discussion. I'll now introduce my co-appellant Dinah Verby.
Thank you, Summer. Could we have the next slide, please? The original condition of approval twenty-seven for the subdivision provided, as proposed by the applicant, all the new buildings shall be designed and constructed to attain all necessary points to achieve LEED certification and shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It is a green building certification program. The more points that are earned, the more sustainable the project. Condition Twenty-seven was intended to apply to the entire subdivision. Next slide. What are green points in LEED? Both are rating systems that award points for different categories of green building. Green points are generally considered to be less rigorous and more flexible, while LEED is literally the gold standard for projects in the top one to five percent of best construction practices. LEED is used to measure residential and commercial projects all over the world. Those standards are not on an honor system, but are rather verified by a LEED professional or a green point rater. Next slide. In two thousand and fifteen, the planning commission and city council approved a project for Lot Two of this subdivision that was proposed by Javier Chavaria, also the project engineer here for Lot Three. Mr. Chavaria contended that he need only achieve a hundred or more green points rather than LEED gold. After extensive discussion, the planning commissioners, including my co-appellant, Rich Campbell, and current council member Sue Batterlass, who was on the planning commission then, rejected Mr. Chavaria's argument. They concluded unanimously that Original Condition Twenty-seven required all the homes to be built to LEED gold standard. Most of the discussion at that time centered around whether the developer actually had to get the LEED certification, but the requirement to meet LEED gold was never in dispute. Ultimately, the planning commission decided that Condition Twenty-seven required only the gold points, but not the actual certification, and they added a requirement to achieve a hundred points on the green point rating system. Next slide, please. On July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the city council, including council member O'Neill, affirmed the planning commission decision for Lot Two, and they again ruled that Lot Two should be constructed to LEED gold and achieve at least a hundred points on the green point rating system. The city council resolution from that decision characterized this condition as clarifying Original Condition Twenty-seven. Next slide. We are pleased that staff tonight agrees with us that Condition Nine of the Planning Commission Resolution for Lot Three conflicts with Original Condition Twenty-seven because it eliminated the LEED standard. Next slide. Appellants have concerns about the future developments in this subdivision. And as much as we are pleased that we have reached an agreement with the applicant in this case, we do want the city council to pay attention as to what tonight means for the rest, for the future of the subdivision. And we note that staff disagrees with our contention that the council's decision on Lot Two was a legal precedent. So let's not speak in terms of precedent. Let's speak instead in terms of consistency and uniformity in application of conditions of approval. While it may be true that each lot must go through a separate approval process, it is also true that Condition Twenty-seven is intended to apply to all the homes in the subdivision. Appellants question how and why the same condition could possibly be interpreted differently for each home. We are asking the city to employ all means necessary to ensure that the legal standard required by Condition Twenty-seven will be applied to future homes. We also have additional concerns with what is apparently a new interpretation by staff that we think creates a loophole for a, quote, hardship exception. The staff report states that there is a presumption that projects in the planned development portion must attain points necessary to achieve LEED gold certification. But there's an exception where proven to be technically infusible or where another significant hardship can be demonstrated by an applicant. We ask, how will this presumption be enforced? What is the standard for finding significant hardship? Will an applicant's mere desire to save money be sufficient? Will the city require financial disclosures as a condition of demonstrating economic hardship? And what will be the alternative required of applicants who do claim hardship? Will there be no green building standards? We think the city should remove this exception. It is in the best interest of all concern for the city to define the terms once, now, once and for all. We really don't want to have to come back and appeal each project on each lot. We had a final slide. Thank you. We had a final slide prepared, but we're not going to use that slide, so I'm going to sum up and give our concluding remarks, which is that we do concur with staff's recommendation to grant the appeals in part, and we request adoption of option being the staff report to conform to the party's MOU. I did promise the applicant Bijan that I would emphasize and clarify the party's mutual understanding that the green points and the LEED points may overlap. And with that, we will conclude our initial presentation. I want to thank all of you, and I also want to thank staff for their assistance in helping us come to this point.
Right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I just need to get my notes, so I make sure we don't skip anything. All right. Does council have any questions of the applicants? No, sorry.
Appellants.
Appellants. I'm on the right, wrong part. Go ahead. Um, council members. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm not clear this. On that last slide, you had the term removing significant hardship. Did I miss it, or I didn't really recall? I don't know where this goes to staff or to the appellant. Where is that in the staff report?
I'll answer that. That, I was paraphrasing from the staff reported page three, and it's also page three of the draft resolution where staff has come up with, which is new to us, a hardship exception that would not require them to achieve LEED gold, and that's what we're questioning. We're questioning that exception.
Keep it in the, now, I'm kind of like going through this iPad here, trying to read what you're talking about, but the, but in the number, in the motion that staff recommends us doing, which I heard you say you agreed with, right? That is not, that would have to be a separate motion if we were to do that, the significant hardship.
I think the city attorney or staff should answer that one.
So Councilman O'Neill, good evening again. Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. I think there are a couple different issues being discussed concurrently, and it's difficult to separate them and focus in on what the distinctions are. We have issues related to the specific project we're talking about tonight on Lot Three. And the condition of approval language, as the appellants have indicated, is recommended by staff they agree with. However, there's also this parallel issue where they're looking to apply whatever decision you make more broadly to the entire Harmony at One subdivision. And that's where I think staff is not in agreement with the appellants, and it's based primarily on the plain language of Condition Number Twenty-seven, where it says, in part, the applicants shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible. And so in the plain language of the original project approvals, it suggests there may be instances where it's not possible. And so that gets to, you know, as the terms I used, a significant hardship of some sort might prevent a particular developer from achieving LEED gold certification. And I think that's the issue that the appellants seem to be focused in on.
Have we ever invoked the significant hardship? I know there's a couple other units that are planned down there or in plan review or something. My correct? With that, are there, the people wanting to use that term?
I would say the answer is no. The, there are essentially two sections of the Harmony at One subdivision. There's everything you think of as Harmony at One, and then there's a single lot off to the east known as Lot D that is not part of the planned development and not subject to all of the same requirements. Lot D is the only project under construction currently. We have not had any projects in the planned development portion of Harmony at One or a loanee point proceed to the building permit phase thus far. In the approvals for Lot Two, another project that's been mentioned, those have expired, and so this potentially could be the first project for the planned development portion of the subdivision to advance to the building permit phase, depending on what the council, what action the council takes this evening.
And was the significant hardship verbiage or their part of the original conditions of approval back in two thousand and seven?
Not expressly. I think I tried to put a different way of describing what the meaning is of the original Condition Twenty-seven from the Harmony at One project. The language in the original Condition Number Twenty-seven indicates that they shall achieve LEED certification or the necessary points for LEED certification and shall seek to obtain a gold standard, i.e. LEED gold, whenever possible. And so again, it suggests that there may be instances where it's not possible, and that plain language of Condition Twenty-seven did not go so far as to require LEED gold certification, and I think that's an important distinction. I think it's a distinction without much practical effect, because the presumption is that folks are going to build to LEED gold. We've had two applicants thus far on Lot Two and Lot Three agree to build to LEED gold certification. However, we think as a technical and a legal point, it's not a requirement of the original Harmony at One, and it shouldn't hold up somebody from building their project if they prove that it's not possible to achieve LEED gold certification. And there's, there's an exemption for that in the original Condition Twenty-seven.
And what, what would be potential significant hardships for someone getting LEED gold?
I think it would be very unlikely, if not impossible, for that to include a financial hardship. This requirement and this presumption, as I would describe it, is clearly in the record for anybody looking to purchase property in here, in the subdivision, and so I think they should understand that LEED gold certification is what they need to achieve. However, there could be some technical infeasibility that I'm not able to think of right now, but I think it would be a very remote instance where somebody would not be required to build to LEED gold certification because they somehow encountered a hardship that would prevent them from doing so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And say the.
Counsel, I just wanted to verify that the questions right now should be focused on the appellant team. Questions of staff will be taken after the appellants are finished.
Well, whether the appellate yielded to staff or the attorney, so.
So we'll hold staff questions until after we've heard from the applicant.
I think Mary wanted to say something, didn't she?
Mayor Protem?
I think it was directed at staff, so it's okay. Thank you.
So you'll hold that.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you, appellants.
Any other questions for the appellants from council? Okay, seeing none.
I'll take a moment to transition from our appellant to the applicant team now.
Thank you very much.
Hey, counsel, we have our applicant team of Javier Chavaria and Bijan Kuzrabi.
Oh, okay. Everybody's waiting for us. Is that the case, or?
We were, we were getting the presentation queued up so that it would be ready. I just wanted to double check again. This is a twenty-minute presentation. Is there a PowerPoint?
My understanding is that there's no PowerPoint that you're presenting tonight. It will just be verbal?
Yes, actually, it would be verbal. I don't have anything, you know, much actually to add. I have just a few comments would like to actually.
Mr. Kuzrabi, before you start, would you like to take a rebuttal period of up to six minutes?
No, actually, I do not have any particular questions or concern regarding what was said. I think we should focus, or I think my comment would be to focus on Lot Three, the issues associated.
I'll begin, I'll begin the clock now, and if I can give you a two-minute remaining warning.
And then, just for my edification, before you start that, would Javier Chavaria be presenting with you, or are you presenting?
I'm just going to speak a few things, and that would be me only speaking. I think Javier may have some comments regarding what was said. I have not spoken to him, but if he's, he has comments, he would provide those comments as needed.
During the rebuttal period?
Correct. Javier, do you have any comments? I'm sorry that we are not as, I'm sorry that we are not as organized as.
No, I defer to you, Bijan, and if you need any information from me, I'll be more than happy to jump in immediately.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you both. I'll begin your, I'll begin the clock for your presentation.
Before we do that, City Clerk, I just want to clarify for the mayor. So what, what we heard is the applicant only wants twenty minutes for the opening presentation at the conclusion of the appellant's rebuttal. We will then turn back to the applicants and ask them if they need any rebuttal time. So they haven't, they haven't given up their right to rebuttal at this point. It's just, did they want to take any time from their opening presentation to reserve in addition to their six-minute rebuttal? And the answer to that is no.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so I would like to first of all, thank the Honorable Mayor and the city council members for their time. And it is a greatly pleasure to meet everyone, and I want to just describe a little bit about the background, say a few words. We purchased Lot Three in Harmony in two thousand and sixteen, and after two years, we worked with Javier, developed the architectural plan for this lot, and started applying for the preliminary approval with the city planning department. And we went through a lot of discussions, and we understood the requirements. And it took a long time. It took almost two years to go back and forth trying to meet the requirements of the city, including an additional environmental studies that we had to, we had to conduct. We had to conduct to prove that this project meets the environmental condition. After so many years, in April of two thousand twenty one. We finally got the preliminary approval. And shortly after, we recognized that we have two appeals. And the appeals are in five categories of issues. I studied those, all those appeal very sort of in details and with attention. Consulted my, my, my legal team, consulted my engineering, architectural team. And requested the meeting with the appellants. And I was very impressed meeting Richard Campbell and Dino Verby. For a coffee, I think we met in Pacifica. And I felt that their requirements and what they are requesting were very genuine. And we decided that the best course of action to look at the requirements and see how we can comply with those requirements. And as I said, there were five different categories of requirements. One included the hillside preservation. Which was very important to Richard Campbell. After months of negotiation, we finally agreed with a, an MOU. Which committed for us to comply with the requirements of the appellants. I'm very happy that we have this new design. The new design, I believe, is the, it meets the requirements. And it also provides a nice design for myself and, and my wife. To build a, a residential home in Pacifica. We are now looking and finally to be able to get the final approval. For the building permit and, and then start the construction, hopefully so. So that's a general comment that I wanted to make. I enjoyed listening to the conversation on both sides. I think the city staff worked extremely hard to, to meet. The requirements for this, for this meeting. And I wanted to thank you, thank, thank them as well. And with that, I'd like to conclude my comments and leave it open to any questions that the city council and honorable mayor may have.
Thank you very much. So does the council have any questions of the applicant, Mr. Kuzrabi?
I don't have any questions, but can I make a comment or is that for later?
Right, right now? I'm sorry, I'm slow on getting my video. Sorry, my apologies. This time is just four questions.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing.
Okay.
And we will get public comments and then we will close the public hearing and then we will get rebuttals from the appellants. And the applicant if, if required. And then we will bring it back to council. We will then have staff, if they have any clarifying comments to make before. The council starts deliberating, they will do that. And then the council will deliberate and then you can ask your questions. Sorry.
Thank you very much for that clarification. If there are no questions from council and I'm not seeing any hands, then. We will open the public hearing and receive public testimony and questions or testimony. So that would be Mr. Montemeyer. And I'm checking our attendees.
We have four hands raised at this moment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, very well. If you could please. Proceed. Oh, just to clarify, this is three minutes, city attorney?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, the public hearing?
Yes, during public hearing.
Council, the council, you can, you have the discretion to establish a. Limit or reduce the minutes, if you like. It's, it's the same as any other agenda item. So depending upon the number of speakers, if you would like to reduce it to two minutes, you may do so.
So. I propose to counsel that we limit public comment to two minutes. And I would like to know if you have any concern about that. Thumbs up. I can't see everybody. We're all good. All right. City, City Clerk Coffee and Mr. Montemeyer, if you could please. Reflect that we're going to have two minutes of public comment from each person.
The clock reset. Our first speaker is Sue Degree followed by Margaret Gooddale. So you may now unmute yourself.
Sue Degree, thank you. I want to appreciate, express great appreciation for the four members of the public. For the awesome presentation and extremely hard work that they've done and also for the attitude of the and comments of the owner. Very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Our next speaker is Margaret Gooddale followed by Dave. Margaret, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, counsel. Please tonight uphold the lead appeal. But at the same time, think about what development can do to hurt Pacifica. We want to thank the owner of this property for voluntarily abiding by the HPD. Elsewhere, unfortunately, city staff and then the planning commission have facilitated and approved what amount to violations of the HPD. Examples are the overgrading at Vassler and the enormous disturbance under the pretense of recreation on Lot D at Harmony. Ironically now called Aloney Point that ignores the HPD requirements. This is really unacceptable. Tonight in current planning applications, there are several projects that seek variances or reinterpretations to get around the HPD ordinance. This is most egregious at Lindamar Woods and Pacifica Highlands. The clear intent of the HPD ordinance is to protect the character and beauty of this town we all hold dear. And current planning staff, commission and council, please remember that you represent the interests of the citizens living here. Not merely real estate speculators. What is happening here to our town? It is written that both HPD removal and zoning changes require a public vote. And we, the people, demand our right to vote if you are going to make changes to the HPD or to change zoning. And my partner Stan was unable to raise a second hand on this computer. He would like a minute to speak or just. Approximately that much, if he could please also speak outside of my two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. For the next speaker that's going to come up on your line, Margaret, can you please take your name for the record?
Okay.
Hi, folks. This is Stan Zeven. I hope you can hear me. Let me know if you can.
We can hear you.
Huh?
We can hear you fine, Stan. Please go ahead.
Okay, good evening, city council. This issue is a simple one. It's about honoring the law, keeping commitments and serving the will of the people. Tonight I support the LED appeal. I'd also like to thank the owner of. The owner for voluntarily complying with the law. In the future, all the city council needs to do is follow what is written in the HPD ordinance. The intent is straightforward and easy to understand. Tonight isn't for me. Tonight isn't just about the LED appeal and the HPD. It's about the ethical choices this. Counsel makes. At times actually ignoring our laws and with constant reinterpretation of these laws. And with the degree of transparency plummeting. And with the lack of simply caring and just doing what is best for Pacifica. That ethical bar has never been lower for our council. Fool me and show me that I didn't waste my time tonight. Do what is right. Starting tonight, follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave followed by Nick Luson. Dave, you may now mute yourself.
Hi, my name is Dave Plum. Mary Ann and I bought our home here on Roberts Road back in nineteen ninety seven. And we live just across the entrance from the Aloney Drive, Harmony One. We've been aware of all of the, all the different stages of development from the first approvals through the. Approval of the spec house on Lot Three. We also were deeply involved in making a case that the California green standard was acceptable to us. And we thought it was a lot more practical and easy to follow than, than going for an actual lead certification. Going to, to get, get as many lead points as possible without a certification is fine. Or requiring a certification is way too much. We'd like to welcome our neighbor Bijan. We, we think is incredibly patient of you to put in five years in the preparation of, of. The lot and the design to build a home. We're glad you cooperated with the law. We're all for, we're all for complying with the Hillside Preservation District. Glad you are. And we, we hope that the city will approve the project so that you can start construction out of your home and move in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our next speaker is Nick followed by Suzanne Moore. Nick, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Luson and I'm a resident of Pacifica, living here in Lindamar. First off, I want to applaud the efforts of our community members to put in such an immense volunteer hours for the betterment of our community. I also want to thank the owner of this property for his genuine approach and joining our community. And I want to welcome him and his family to Pacifica. My concern here is around the precedents being set here and hopefully the lessons we should be learning around this project for future ones as they come under consideration. I have three points I'd like to speak to. The first is a meeting with a number of people from our council and from our city staff who've been asked about compromise. In specific regards to the project being proposed in Lindamar Woods and Hillside Meadows. Why should we compromise when we see actions like this? We see that the, the community went through a large amount of work in order to reach a compromise. But then years later, it seemed to be ignored and allowed to be reneged on at the planning level. And so this decision matters. When you ask us to compromise on the next thing. Do we have faith that that will be held up in the future? So I think this, it's an important factor to consider. Number two, it's been very clear from several meetings, our planning commissioners don't understand the HPD ordinance sufficiently. And they've been asking for presentation by staff as well as a joint study session with council. But they're going ahead and approving variances anyway. So the HPD ordinance, ordinance. So how can you approve an exception to a policy that you don't fully understand? So I would ask council to work with the planning commission on that front. Finally, I have great respect for Pacifica Planning Department and their professional approach. However, I disagree with their orientation around HPD. They seem to be oriented to work around HPD in the interest of proposed projects being successfully ushered through the application process. But that's against the will of the people and our current policy. Staff doesn't set policy. Their job is to execute it. Reinterpretation of this policy is a form of resetting policy. So we would ask that also council speaks with staff on that front. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore followed by Cliff Lawrence. Suzanne, you may now mute yourself.
Thank you, Suzanne Moore. I'm grateful for the hard work of the team who are presenting an appeal on Harmony One Lot Three. The project was out of compliance with previously defined conditions of approval, but the team negotiated with the owner to change the design to the betterment of all. Although I acknowledge the work of this grassroots effort, I am concerned that the work was done by concerned community rep members rather than those on the planning commission. It seems the planning commission may not have been provided with the background of conditions of approval and a critical evaluation necessary for informed vote. To expect that the public watchdog projects for basic compliance with our codes is not in the best interest of the community. Both the public and the planning commission should be able to trust the information the staff report. If the staff are overworked or under trained, then council and the city manager should assure that they have needed resources. Over the next years, our community will be asked to increase our housing as stipulated by regional housing needs assessment. Will be depending on city staff and our planning commission to approve projects which comply with the law. The Hillside Preservation Ordinance reflects the community's prioritization to maintain ridge lines and build sustainably. Pacifica needs low income housing and has failed to bid, build any for nearly two decades. To achieve this, we will rely on project approval from our city staff and planning commission. I believe it is possible to build low income housing which is safe and respectful of Pacifica's unique environment. This evening, the appeal team identified areas where there was a breakdown of important data. There are areas where greater work is needed if Pacifica is to build safe, affordable and environmentally protective housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. The next speaker is Cliff Lawrence followed by Remy Tan. Cliff, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening again. This is Clipper Lawrence. This is Fairmont. I'm really so pleased about this collaboration. That has taken place here and the good work and the good faith that's been demonstrated by the owner. And these, these volunteers and the public, that this is what public engagement can accomplish. And, and I hope that we all embrace it. There, there are some terms that get thrown around that just baffle me. And all I've learned about SEQUA so far from reading city documents is that apparently it's something that you have to demonstrate you're exempt from. So I don't understand what it is because all I ever read is, is being exempt. These things I trust were put in place for a reason. The SEQUA, whatever that is, the, the EIRs are to protect this. The Hillside Preservation District, the ridge line definitions, all these things were put in place for a reason. And they are our guardrails and hopefully we will continue to honor those. And move forward collaboratively, but within those frameworks that were established by those who came before us. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Cliff. Our next speaker is Remy Tan followed by Cindy Abbott. Remy, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, Remy Tan. Again, a specific manner, also local licensed architect. I just want to talk a couple of things about this project. The lead is very important. This lead is the highest standard. The professionals there, lead AP, they go through a very rigorous testing protocol. I, I myself in lead AP and I found the exam actually even harder than the architecture exam. So it's very, very rigorous. So you make sure that, you know, the designers make sure that the projects are in fact very high level sustainability. And then the certification is very important because that's basically the back check to the work of the designers and the certifications done by. US Green Building Council by subject matter experts who are also lead APs. So that's something that really can't be shortcutted. So I do concur with the appellants that the lead certification goals of certification should be put back in. To the, this project and made precedence for all the remaining projects on this site. The other issue that I have is the HPD is very clear. It says you can't build on the ridge line. And I was shocked that this project or this development got approved with the road basically on the ridge line and the houses on the ridge line. Unfortunately, it's a little late because the road's already in. You can see it from Lager Ridge. You can see it from Maury Point. You can see it from the highway. So at this point, you know, we're kind of cleaning up spilled milk on this one. And I do, you know, urge that the council put an additional, you know. Conditional approval on this project and all projects moving forward to have some landscaping on the house. And this is one of the better projects because it's only one story, but it is, you know, twelve to twenty-three foot high building and it does need to be screened. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Remy. Our next speaker is Cindy Abbott. Cindy, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Cindy Abbott, resident of West Har Park. And I followed the wrong, long process. And I followed the long, long process involved in the original permitting for this project proved way back in two thousand and seven. And it involved a lot of give and take by all who were engaged, and the community was really engaged. And that seems to be the true legacy of this project, a need for ongoing diligence and continued active community participation. I'd like to express deep thanks to the appellants and the property owner Bijan Koserabi for their time and investment to ensure that the original spirit of the approval is not going to be diminished. I'm very concerned, though, that the staff reports for this project seem to have been missing information, didn't clearly detail past approvals for the planning commission, and didn't really highlight the importance and key parts of the Hillside Preservation District and the ordinance that's been in place since nineteen seventy-two. I've recently been doing some reading and came across early references to a proposed hillside development policy. However, in nineteen seventy-two, when this ordinance was approved, it had been changed to hillside preservation. And that's the intent of it, to ensure that our hillsides and ridge lines are preserved. This evening, I'm requesting the council to uphold the appeal requiring the lead certification that has twice been voted on and to not add new language about significant hardship that hasn't been required up to this time or approved, and to support the memorandum of understanding negotiated by the appellants. And after that, let's have a public meeting and study session with all parties to make sure we're clear about the importance of preserving the hillsides in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. The next speaker I see is Christine Bowles. But Christine, since you are an appellate, you may not be able to comment as a member of the public at this time. Something to be lowering your hand.
Is it possible that there's someone else in the household that is having a public comment or requesting public comment during this hearing? I need to hear from the city attorney on this.
Well, i- if if it's not Christine Bowles who's making the comment, yes, they can make the comment.
So.
This is Robert Bowles. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I I am indeed another member of the household, and I'm sorry, we thought we had set up the computer so that it wouldn't have Christine's name on it, but we're not as technically proficient as we'd like to be.
No worries. Thank you for clarifying. Please go ahead. Oh, wait, we need to reset the clock. I'm so sorry. You can please wait. Just want to go ahead, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Bowles. I'm also a licensed architect living in the Manor District. And I'm calling in to support the original requirement that the project and future homes in the subdivision achieve lead gold design. Lead gold for homes, which was developed in part by Pacifica's own and adminster, is indeed the gold standard for sustainable design. Achieving the gold rating requires reaching a variety of objective standards in a number of categories. There are options for how to achieve them, but little subjectivity about whether one has been attained. There is no particular reason to plan for, as staff seems to want to do, technical infeasibility or special hardship in meeting the requirements. Lead gold is achieved on many projects, and the flexibility of the system allows for one to go around difficulties and attain compliance in alternative ways. The best way to achieve lead or any other green certification like Build It Green is to have a competent certified designer in charge of the project throughout the design and construction document process. Just as important, it is critical to have an independent certified consultant on hand during construction to review the ongoing work and verify that the project is built as designed. Independent verification by a properly trained professional is key to both lead and build it green. Certification, a slightly different thing, which requires a considerable amount of paperwork and a bureaucratic hassle, is not so critical. It's verification that's critical. It isn't necessarily cheap or easy to achieve lead gold certificate or verification. But remember, this subdivision is one for ultra-luxury houses, and the cost for lead gold compliance should be well within the budget of these owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speaker is Michael Vernaz, followed by Carolyn Clary. Mike, you may now meet yourself.
Hi there. How are you this evening? I just wanted to echo the appellants messaging in terms of I hope we don't just have to keep doing this on every development. You know, the amount of outreach across this project and the others that are being formulated right now are getting a lot of people's interest and and they want to learn more because we do love our our town and where we live. And I know everyone else on this call does too. So I hope, long term, that that we figure out how to manage this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speaker is Carolyn Clary, followed by Joanne Arnos. Carolyn, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, I rather than just reiterating over and over again, I do applaud everybody that's been involved, especially the watchdog group and the owner. And I guess my take-home concern is I think we should set up standards. I don't think we should have little loopholes for, quote, hardships. I think we we decided that this is the standard we held for this development, and we should stick with that. And that should be easy to apply then to any other developments that come down the road in hillsides. But I think we can't have loopholes. That's just a recipe for disaster, a recipe for for litigation, and I do think we shouldn't have to have a watchdog group look at every single home development. I think the planning department needs to take more responsibility and having a hard line like like they need to be. Just follow the rules, no loopholes, and thank you guys for your time.
Carolyn, our next speaker is Joanne Arnos, followed by Dave Joes. Joanna, you may now meet yourself.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to reiterate what most people have said about this process, which I want to applaud the grassroots efforts and also the applicant that they collaborated and came to a decision on this project. I I am a strong believer in HPD, and it seems like it's been interpreted very loosely lately, and I don't see it that way. As I read it and reviewed it, it's not that loose to be interpreted on every site that hits the planning department. The other thing I wanted to say is I strongly agree with a study group that this planning commission right now and the council come together and go over it and analyze it and understand it. And I think that will be beneficial to all the grassroots people here in town that want to keep our open hills open and want to have buildings that comply to the desires of most of the residents here and to preserve Mother Earth and not to build haphazardly on her and have it be so permanent. Houses that are built here don't go away. They are part of the scene, and I think more consciousness and consideration should be adopted by the city and city council that we are we, the members of the community, are being honored with our desires to keep her beautiful and open. And the other thing that I think is highly important through this process is, once again, I want to say the grassroots and also the applicant to come together and collaborate. We're at a time right now where we collaboration is one of the most important things we can do to have this city work.
I need to stop you there.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jen, and our last speaker of this evening is Dave Joes. Jay, Joe, sorry, Dave, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, this is actually Deborah Hovas. Like, I just want to reiterate what a lot of the other speakers, much more eloquent and knowledgeable speakers tonight are saying. I'd like to thank the property owner and our vigilant community members for working together. It's very concerning to me. It seems like applications are perhaps not being verified properly, or they're being reviewed too loosely or whatever. I understand that the the development that's going up on Fassler might not conform with HPD, and we've got a lot of other applications for developments on our hillsides, and it should not be up to our watchdog grassroots community members to make sure that these projects conform to our current laws. So I'm I'm just requesting that the city do a better job so that our community members don't have to spend their money and time doing its your jobs for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn this off.
Madam, we have no more hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to close public hearing then and bring it back to the council. At this point, council members, we have appellants and applicants that have six minutes of rebuttal time. So.
And a mayor will will ask the appellants first if they need any rebuttal time. And then after their rebuttal, then we will move to the applicant and ask them if they have any time that they would like to use in rebuttal.
But my understanding is that they each have up to six minutes. Is that correct, city attorney?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So applicant, pardon me, appellants, do you wish to use your rebuttal time? And if so, can you let me know who's going to be speaking?
Yes, we will use our rebuttal time, and I think it's going to be three of us speaking, Rich Campbell, and then Christine Bowles, and then myself. This is Dinah Verdi speaking.
Thank you very much. And did you want a notice from the city clerk when we're a minute out from the end of your period of time? Minutes? Did you want a warning?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
City clerk for one minute warning, if you would.
I can share the screen with the timer for the rebuttal period if you if you wish. That may be better.
That'd be great. Thanks so much. Okay, please go ahead.
Shall I start, Dinah? All right. I just wanted to hit one point, and that is the significant hardship clause that's been introduced. You know, as a lawyer, you know, in general, I think we should refrain from changing legal standards like that on the fly. I admittedly just haven't had the time to to research the difference between the legal standard of whatever's possible versus this new thing that's been introduced, significant hardship, but you know, in law, you have different legal standards. I know that if you go to case law or statutes, they can mean different things. And so I just just from that point of view, I'd be remiss in, I I if I were making this decision, I wouldn't want to just change something like that on the fly. Whenever possible, can actually mean something very different than significant hardship. So I've got, there's a simple solution to this, and if you went to page B three of the resolution, you'll see in the middle of the page, the original condition of approval and the language that says there that as proposed by the applicant, all the new buildings shall be designed and constructed to attain lead basically, and shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible. And then you drop down to the next paragraph, and at the last sentence, there's the clause. You know, except we're proven to be technically infusible or were another significant hardship with achieving. Sorry, I've got this thing so small I can barely read it. Or another significant hardship with achieving points necessary for lead gold certification can be demonstrated by an applicant. And I would just strike that and just replace it with whenever possible. It seems to me, just keep the standard. Staff seems to be hard pressed to find a situation where you wouldn't get the seek the or achieve the lead certification, the points. So it seems to me to be a solution in need of a problem anyway. So I would just strike that last phrase in the I think it's the third full paragraph on that page and be done with it. Thank you. That's it for me.
And and I'll just continue. And actually, my my husband said everything I really wanted to say, but you know, we're we're architects who work professionally designing high-end sustainable homes. That's that's our business and has been for thirty years now. We build to lead and build at green standards all the time. It is not ever a hardship to build to those standards. Unless you don't actually plan from the start to build to those standards. You think about your siding. You think about your orientation. You think about your shading when you lay out your building from the start. You know, I I don't know the process for this particular house. I I know they're just going through their lead certification now. You know, if you do it later, you might find that you have too many west-facing windows and too much solar gain, and you might have to change your design, and someone could argue that, oh, that's a hardship. I'm going to lose my view, but really, that's not a hardship. That is something that could have been solved with proper design from the beginning. I I completely disagree with the hardship clause and agree with my co-appellants that it should be stricken. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. So I'll sum up for appellants, and if I could, I'd like to direct everybody's and council's attention to packet page four sixteen, which is the draft resolution, attachment A to the staff report. And so I just want to sum up by being as clear as I can about the changes that we're asking for in the resolution. There's one very hyper-technical thing I wanted to point out, which is the first full paragraph on page four sixteen refers to the rezoning of the original subdivision. And there's a little bit of an error there. It says the subdivision site was rezoned from AB five HPD. And that should actually be, it was rezoned from PD HPD. I've discussed this with Christian. I think he agrees. That property was not zoned agricultural. So that's just a technical correction that should be made in the resolution. Further down on page four sixteen, the passage that Rich Campbell just cited, the middle paragraph, which starts with the requirement in COA twenty-seven of the original approval is clear. There's a sentence that begins, thus, there is a presumption that projects in the planned development portion of the Aloney Point subdivision, generally those areas other than Lot D, will attain points necessary to achieve lead gold certification. We are asking you to strike the rest of that sentence that begins with except and instead just say whenever possible, which is actually what the condition of approval says. And then beyond that, we are happy with the language farther down on that page, which is the proposed condition, adopt granting the appeal and including the condition that meets with the party's agreement. So that sums up our comments and our presentation. Thank you all very much. And we hope that your deliberations will be short and sweet.
Thank you very much. All right. And it is now the applicant's opportunity for rebuttal for up to six minutes.
Madam Mayor, there is no rebuttal from applicant.
All right then. Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing, and I'm returning to council for deliberation in action. Bringing it back to council, we were engaging in some conversation discussions of questions of staff earlier. I want to check in and see if there's any questions that council members have at this point.
And then, Madam Mayor, maybe even before that, we should ask staff if they have any clarifying comments based on the testimony that they heard.
Thank you very much. That's really an excellent suggestion. Please go ahead, staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few points at a high level. I don't think it's fair to say that the public is doing our jobs. You know, we have a lot of issues that we resolve, and I think if the public were to see the project that comes through the door as compared to the project that gets to hearing, they would recognize the amount of work that goes into it. That said, staff is human. that gets to hearing, they would recognize the amount of work that goes into it. That said, staff is human. I'm human, we make mistakes. I can't speak to any particular issues because they were not raised in the appeals that came to hearing tonight. So I think it's unfair to make a one-sided representation in that regard. But know that more broadly, we've heard the community interest in the way that the city evaluates the HPD. And we are adjusting our procedures to make sure that we get clear, consistent information from applicants and that we do more in our reports to explain the thought process behind the city's analysis of projects in the HPD. So that it's clear to the decision-makers and to the community. We, we value that feedback from the public and we're thankful for it that they're explaining that they need to understand more about what we're doing and why. So we take that to heart and we appreciate the feedback in that regard. With that said, I, I don't think it's a correct characterization that we've changed interpretations or we're creating new policy with our interpretations. I think what is fair to say is that this community hasn't had to confront a project with an HPD coverage variance, for example, since two thousand eight. And so it's just been a long time since our communities had to confront some of these issues with respect to development in the HPD. And so understandably, it's it's a process that we have to bring the community along throughout that process. In regards to this discussion of the significant hardship and some adjustment to the prior conditions, it's, it's not true in my opinion. What that is, is a narrative description carried into the resolution to explain the thought process on the part of the council, should they adopt that resolution? To give some meaning to what the original condition number twenty-seven said, where it says that they should obtain a gold standard whenever possible. So I wouldn't object to changing that language as requested by the appellants to just stick strictly to what the original condition said. But as we've heard in this hearing and in the two thousand fifteen hearing and in other hearings related to Harmony at One, sometimes the original conditions left us wanting for greater clarity. And that's in part why I added that thought process related to the significant hardship in this case. But it's not essential to staff's recommendation and it's fine from our perspective to change it to align precisely with the language whenever possible. Lastly, no objection from staff to correct the typographical error about or the factual error rather about rezoning for agricultural. It should be rezoning from PD HPD to PD with development plan and HPD. So we could make that adjustment if the council adopts this resolution. And so I think just more generally to close, we are also appreciative of the work of the community and the applicant to work together to resolve these issues. We think the private solutions are often the best solutions and that's certainly the example in this case. We would, I think, disagree more generally with some of the assertions made about the record and what the facts show in the written record, but those aren't an issue tonight and we don't wanna sully what is, I think, a good outcome for the community with the modifications to this project. And we strongly urge the council to approve the revised project and to make the various minor adjustments to some of the language that, that we've discussed. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Council members. Are there questions? Clarify questions? I have questions.
I was gonna say, I thought Mary did.
It was answered along the way.
I like when that happens. If I could, my, Mr. O'Neil, did you have something?
I was just gonna suggest that we wanna hear from Jim Godwin, the planning commissioner. And the thoughts of why the planning commission made the decision they did.
Sure, please, Mr. Godwin. If you have any comments or anything you'd like to share on that point.
Sure, we looked at this project in, in a fair amount of detail and we obviously relied heavily on on the professional planning staff and think we got great advice from them for the most part. You know, the, this was a pretty unique project compared to one of the other ones we've seen and it's, as Christian has pointed out, it's probably been fifteen years since the hillside preservation ordinance was was really looked at critically. I think we went through everything we thought was important, including the hundred green points and and felt like the project was a worthwhile addition to the city and justified being approved.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to clarify if I could please, probably city attorney and staff. On exactly which page of our lengthy packet on this topic? The language that we are being asked to approve is located.
Four oh eight.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Proton.
Welcome.
So. If there are no further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, council member Vadenloss.
Um, I have a question about build it green. When, when did build it green come into play? Because there wasn't build it green. There was only lead standards. I don't know the year and if anybody knows what year that was. I, I believe it was after this project was initiated.
Council member Vadelas, in the ten seconds I had to Google, it looks like perhaps it was created in two thousand four. I can't say for sure. I think lead preceded build it green from what I understand in the late nineties. But if I could just add, you know, with respect to this question about whether legal certifications required and under what circumstances would a project not be required to have lead gold in the Harmony at One subdivision? I think that language in the original condition number twenty-seven from two thousand seven needs to be understood in the context in which it was put in place. And that's a context in which that particular version of lead, as I understand it, was new and maybe even had come out earlier in that same year. And so I think there were uncertainties around how projects would be designed to achieve compliance with legal. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to understand that in two thousand seven, they may have considered there were instances where it may be more problematic than imagined to achieve legal certification. And in those instances, getting lead certification at the basic level was better than nothing. And that's certainly what condition number twenty-seven requires. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-one, many people have been designing with lead for many years. They understand how to start a project and work through to the end to get lead gold. And the, the instances where it may not be possible to achieve lead gold are far fewer than they may have been in two thousand seven, for example.
When I was on planning commission, we did as noted by Dinah Verby, that we did remove the certification, but still had the, the person build to lead gold standard. So that became that was what we decided as planning commission for that particular project on, in harmony. I believe it was Lot Two that we approved. So that was the precedence there. Also, I would like to say that I am kind of upset with the public for their criticism of planning, the planning department, the planning commission, the city council. As Christian said, there is massive amount of work that happens. And people just come in and decide that there's no transparency, that we're breaking the law, that the, these items are happening. And not everyone has a full picture of what happens. Have you all served on planning? Have you been in a planning department? Every house is different. Every lot is different. If they weren't different, then we'd have little boxes like Daily City and wouldn't have to go through any of this at all. But every house is different. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Tiger has his hand up.
Oh, thank you so much for pointing that out. Please go ahead, council member Bigstick.
I have a question that leads into some comments. Christian, how long have you been on staff? With us?
I have been on staff for seven years.
Seven years. And thank you for being here on staff with us. I think the city made an exceptionally good choice when we hired you. I think that the planning department does a ridiculous amount of work lately with less staff than we'd like and hopefully that'll be remedied shortly. And so first of all, I just wanna thank you for the job you do for us every day in more ways than my brain is capable of conceiving. After that, the, some of the comments of the public are taken well by me. You know, I, I, I think that there's a lot of learning that is happening over the course of time and, you know, given that all this was relatively new to you when you came on and we're learning right now together how to address Hillside Preservation District as quickly as we can. You know, lately, a lot of comment has been about forming some sort of educational session about Hillside Preservation District, which is a well-taken point and I've begun talking to staff a little bit about what that might look like. But immediately then, as I'm beginning this meeting, beginning in quotation marks, this meeting by talking about how we maybe should start looking at what our priorities are to make sure that they're in alignment with what we understand them to be. And then looking at that list of things that we really deem to be really important enough so that I'm now asking for looking at those priorities again. And then adding another thing onto that list, which is really important to the public. You know, I, I don't want to break your back with everything we're asking you for. And that being said, you know, at least speaking for myself, I've begun talking to city staff about what that educational session might look like. And so as a council person, I get to try and balance these priorities that are this important to not just me, but hopefully the entire community to the best of my understanding against what is humanly possible for our staff to accommodate. So it's, it's a heck of a balancing act sometime to try and figure that out since I'm not staff and I don't have to shoulder that burden. And yet I am trying to figure out how to direct things to the best possible good of the public. And I would imagine some of my fellow council members feel the same way. So all that is to say, thank you, Christian. Public, thank you for being extraordinarily diligent and noticing when something needs to be remedied for whatever reason. And I'm comfortable with the changes in the PD HPD version verbiage and putting in whatever possible, swapping that out with the hardship language on packet page four sixteen. I'm ready to make a motion accordingly. And I'm starting to stumble over my own speech, which means it's probably late, so I'm gonna stop speaking now.
All right, um, the only thing I would like to say is that we have a significant work plan for the city. And echoing what council member Bigstick just said, we are hearing the call for more information on HPD. And we will get to that as we can. I realize that's not specifically germane to this, but I just wanted to make the comment while we're here. We're hearing you, as I said, at the outset of this meeting. And there is a limit to what we can do as quickly as some folks want it done. Please bear with us. I think I heard council member Bigstick say he's ready to make a motion.
Can I just say one thing? If you don't mind, I just wanna thank everybody for the collaboration that went on. You know, and when we can have the public collaborate with the developers, that's the best possible thing that can happen. It happened in Pedro Point, it's happening here, makes me so happy, like it, we just need to encourage that kind of conversation to happen because we all just want what's best for our community, all of us do. Including our planning staff. So Christian, thank you for everything you do. Thank you to the public. There you go, I'm done.
I have, I have to agree too. Thank you so much for the collaboration. And in my roundabout way, I was thanking the planning department. So, thank you. And, and the applicant and the appellants.
Council member Bigstick.
Yes, and Mary reminded me that I left off. I'm embarrassed that I left out how proud I am that the community and the developer were able to get together and find an equitable solution long before they came to us tonight. So roundabout though it may have been, it's, it's heart, it's heart-filling that that was the way that it ultimately worked out. So thank you to both parties accordingly. That being said, and city attorney, help me with the alterations if I need the help. Or let me say, just allude to what has already been talked about.
I am not sure that I'm clear on what modifications. I, and I, and I haven't spoken directly to this point, but I just want to say that the it's important to understand that modifications to the resolution that I think that you're discussing are, are just findings. They're not language, they're not conditions of approval. And, and I actually believe that the language, I'm not sure how to revise the language. So I, I need clarity from the council. What is it that you desire to amend? Because I don't see any need to amend anything because we're not the council, my understanding is not, does not want to change any conditions of approval that staff, the appellants and the applicants haven't already agreed to with regard to the conditions of approval.
I, I agree with Michelle. I, I'm comfortable upholding the appeal per the staff. You know, item choice B. I, I'm given the hour and I didn't really look and study the possibility of removing the significant thing wording. I would like to put that back to another time and actually maybe have a one-on-one with staff in regards to what does that mean? So I would prefer making a motion to support the appeal for using item B, which is the, which is verbatim, the what's in the staff report on packet page four oh eight.
So I think I mostly agree with you. The one place where I slightly differ, there was a reference to what I believe was a typographical error, which might be germane. And that was the A dash Bs dash or A slash B dash five slash HPD should actually read P dash D slash HPD.
Yes, yes, good. Thank you for pointing that out. And, and that was actually already made, you know, I just made that correction. That's an administrative, we don't, the, the council can put that as part of your motion, but you don't need to because that is a technical mistake. It's not a substantive mistake. So, so you can, that will already be corrected.
Fine. And just for the sake of the public who's watching, you're suggesting I don't alter the other language because it isn't a part of one of the conditions of approval. It's not setting precedent in the future for redefining the, wherever possible, true genuine meaning of attaining what attaining lead gold standard means. It's merely kind of describing the finding a little bit more in-depth rather than actually altering definition. Or is it actually altering definition? Because if it's altering?
There, it, it's not altering anything that doesn't already exist.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? Did you, or did you want it, Tiger?
Before, wait, I need some clarification at this moment. There's a motion on the floor. I don't believe there's a second.
There's no motion because there's been deliberation. So somebody needs to make a motion.
Mike made a motion, but then we started.
I made what I was comfortable with, okay, was amending his motion. Cause he had the motion to, to adopt B on page four oh eight, but then he also went down the path of significant other. Personally, given the lateness of the hour and my, I did not have the opportunity to study that because that was, I felt introduced tonight as a new issue. I am only comfortable with granting B on page four oh eight, which is what staff recommended at the very beginning. The applicant and the appellants have all agreed to.
So, so what I understand, council member O'Neil's motion might be, he hasn't made it yet, but what his motion might be is to accept But what his motion might be is to accept staff's recommendation. On the appeal. Noting. That there will be a correction. To the description of the designation from agricultural. To, I believe, PD, Christian?
That's correct, PD.
And that is essentially the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
As stated on section B of page four oh eight.
So, so that is a proposed motion, so we don't have a second. So if anybody wants to second that motion. We would need somebody to second that motion before we could discuss the motion to explain it further.
I'll second.
Okay, now, now anybody can ask questions.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question. So Christian, you had said earlier that you were okay with like changing that, that sex, that. The language on packet page four sixteen, right?
Right, I don't think there was an opportunity for us to fully discuss the implications of that. I think that the point is I don't see any issue with. Any disconnect between what the original condition number twenty seven says and the clarifying language. And as the city attorneys pointed out, that significant hardship language. It's not changing the condition of approval and it's not changing any policy or other requirement of the project. It was simply explaining what it, what it could mean under certain circumstances.
And, and my concern, which is probably the stronger concern than Christian's concern, which is why you got that answer from Christian and not from me. Is because in order to make any changes, I would need to come up with additional language. To better reflect what the council's intent was. With, to mirror essentially what language is already in there. So I would have to, at this late hour, come up with new language because the reality is, there could be. A hardship. That arises in the future that, that would require revisiting it. And, and, and this language to me is broad enough and general enough. That will allow us the, the discretion to make that determination at a future date. It's not for tonight. This, this, this has no implications for tonight. The only implications it could have would be for future projects, but when those projects come to us, we will be able to address the project and the specific language at that time.
And I think that was the whole point of, of what they were saying is that they, that they didn't want that to have to happen every single time.
And, and, and. And what I'm saying is that that issue is not an issue for even this project, so they didn't have to do it for this project. Because we're not granting that exception. That doesn't exist. For this project, correct, Christian?
That's correct. This applicant has committed to construct the project to achieve legal certification.
So, so what I'm saying is that. This is not, this does not have the same. Impact as a condition of approval. These are just the findings that the council had to make. And, and that language reflects. What the narrative is, what the council's intent is, in the event they find a significant hardship. And what they've done in the past. That's where that language came from. So if we want to change that language, then I need to work on what that revised language is going to look like. And given the late hour and the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
I, I don't think that we need to take the time tonight to figure out what that precise language would be.
Okay, I think.
What I'm telling you is I don't want to just delete it entirely without replacing it with something.
Got it.
Okay.
Well, I think we've had a motion in a second unless there's more discussion.
This motion.
Eleven o'clock, we're also gonna need to.
We're gonna have to have another mo- motion in a second in a minute. No further discussion from council? City Clerk Coffee?
The motion. For item number thirteen to approve for staff's recommendation with the. Language amended per the. Correction, the typographical correction, motion by O'Neal and I have a second by Councilmember Big Stick. And I'll start with a roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlas.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
So the appeal is upheld. I make a motion that we extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlas.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the extension to midnight has passed five to zero. That brings us to item number fourteen.
And item fourteen. The subject is the introduction of an ordinance initiated by the City of Pacifica to amend various Pacifica municipal code provisions related to the permitting. Of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And related to the reasonable accommodation process in order to implement provisions of the city's local coastal program. As certified by the California Coastal Commission. With particular file numbers referenced. So we have, this would be move, the recommended action would be moved to waive the first reading and introduced by title only. And. Do I need to read that whole thing right now, city attorney, or should we?
No, no, you do not.
Okay, I think that would be more efficient use of time to have staff explain it in the staff report and we have Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. For that. Hi. Thank you for being.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Beckmeyer and Councilmembers. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. Over the last several years, the City of Pacifica has adopted three ordinances with text amendments related to the accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And junior accessory dwelling units to maintain consistency with the changes in state law. As detailed in the ADU ordinance and as mandated by state regulations. Local text amendments do not take effect in Pacifica's coastal zone until the California Coastal Commission certifies the text amendments. As part of the city's local coastal program or LCP. Since last March, since March of last year, city staff has been working with the coastal commission staff on an LCP amendment. For the text amendments in the ADU ordinance. An additional and an additional text amendment ordinance related to the creation of a reasonable accommodation process adopted by city council in November twenty nineteen. On June ninth, twenty twenty one, the coastal commission conditionally certified the LCP amendment with modifications. Modifications included by the coastal commission as part of their certification would amend the parking standards for ADUs in the coastal zone. Specifically, ADUs within the created coastal access parking areas would be required to provide one parking space per ADU. And a replacement parking for any primary dwelling parking that is removed as a result of the creation of an ADU. This coastal access parking area generally contains areas within one quarter mile walking distance from a public coastal access point as listed in the LCP. Maps of these areas are attached to the draft ordinance. The modifications would also broaden the provisions in which required ADU parking or replacement parking could be provided on a site. Parking standards for ADUs in the coastal zone but outside of the coastal access parking areas would not be affected. The California Coastal Commission also included modifications which would remove all of the amendments made to the coastal development permit exemption and exclusion language stated. Language stating that an LCP amendment was not appropriate, was not an appropriate method to expand the exemptions or categories. Of excluded development without an amendment to the coastal act or the category categorical exclusion order respectively. Staff does not find that the applicability of the exemptions. Or the categories of excluded development to ADUs and JADUs would substantially change as a result of the rejection of the city's amendments to these sections of the. Pacifica municipal code, but will reduce the clarity to the public of the applicability. Of the exemptions and the categories of excluded development. The coastal commission included one modification related to the reasonable accommodation ordinance. They found an additional finding was necessary to ensure that the accommodations did not result in significant coastal resource impacts. At the July nineteenth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance to city council by a vote of six to zero. Commissioner, Commission Member Godwin is present tonight as a planning commission liaison. Staff recommends that city council move to introduce this ordinance without revision to avoid further delays to. ADU applicants waiting to proceed with their projects in the coastal zone. Any modifications to the ordinance as proposed could potentially require a subsequent LCP amendment. And certification by the coastal commission, which presents the possibility of a significant delay prior to taking effect in the coastal zone. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or would you like to go straight to public comment on this item? Public comment? You will open public comment on this item, Mr. Montemeyer.
I see one hand raised by Ray Tan. Amy, yeah, I mean. Once Sarah has the timer up. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Amy Tan, again, architect here in Pacific Matter. I'm glad to hear this is moving forward. The ADU regulation is really. Critical to increase infill housing, which is much needed in Pacifica Bay Area. And, you know, throughout metropolitan cities in California. So I'm glad to hear that, that's going through. I am concerned that about the parking regulation, there's many municipalities in the Bay Area. Actually exempt ADUs from parking, especially if they have a close to transit. So I don't know at this time if it's too late to discuss with the coastal commission. To exempt ADUs that are near our existing bus lines to encourage use of public transit. The traffic in the coastal area is getting worse and worse, especially on the weekends and holidays. You know, now it takes twice as long to get down to Half Moon Bay than we moved out here, you know. In, in the mid nineties, so it's a real concern. And we should be encouraging people to use transit, bike, walk, or, you know, other alternative means other than private car. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Better Mary, if no more hands raised at this time?
Then we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And entertain any questions or comments that council members may have for staff on this item.
I have none.
Either. We just make a motion?
Yeah.
Great. I moved to waive the first reading and introduced by title only an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pacifica amending article four point five accessory dwelling units. Amended article four point three coastal zone combining district and amending article fifty one reasonable accommodation. Of chapter four of title nine of the Pacifica municipal code. Text amendment TA one two zero two one. And finding adoption of the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Beer and second by Councilmember Vatterlas. I'll call the roll call vote for item number fourteen. Starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlas.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Item number fourteen passes unanimously.
All right, team, I'm, hate to do this to you, but I need two minute break. And so I would like us to resume at eleven oh six or seven PM. Thank you. On item fifteen. And the subject is appointments to the Beautification Advisory Committee, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. And Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Recommended action is move to appoint one applicant to Beautification Advisory Committee for one partial term to expire March twenty twenty three. Second. Move to appoint three applicants to the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee for full term, for, for. Full four year terms to expire May twenty twenty five. And third, move to appoint one applicant to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. For a full four year term to expire May twenty twenty five. And our staff report in process will be handled by City Clerk Sarah Coffey. Please go ahead.
Being mayor and council members. The city recruited applicants for the Beautification Advisory Committee, the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. And the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to fill vacancies due to expiring terms and due to. Partial term vacancies on some of those committees. The opportunities were published in the Pacifica Tribune on, on several dates. On the city's website and in the city's connect with Pacifica newsletter and on Nextdoor. The city received five timely applications for the Beautification Advisory Committee. Received four timely applications for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. And received one timely application for the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Interviews were conducted by the city council at a special city council meeting held on July twenty second. Of this year and the list of applicants are attached in the. Agenda packet for your reference. So the, the process would be for. To receive public comment and for council to deliberate to come to a consensus on making motions to nominate. Named individuals to the open positions on each of those committees and commissions. And then by making motion by, to appoint those named applicants to those positions for each of the committee commissions. I'm available to answer any questions. With that, I turn it to city council.
I just had a question I wanted to ask the city attorney. As you know, I wasn't able to make the meeting that night and so I did not see it when I went to the YouTube to try to watch. I just had a question I wanted to ask the city attorney. Um, as you know, I wasn't able to make the meeting that night, and, um, so I did not see it when I went to the YouTube to try to watch the interviews. It, the link did not work. So I have the packets, but you know, the packet that every council member got, but I, I mean, I know some of the applicants just because I'm in, in town, but can I vote on these?
Well, if you feel that you have enough information to vote, you may vote. It's all, it's totally up to you. There's no legal requirement in terms of that you had to be present during interviews. You, you did not, you do not have to be present in interviews in order to vote, but you should make sure that you feel that you have adequate information in order to make an informed decision.
Okay. And you can decide to abstain if. Yeah, yeah.
You don't have to decide now. It's up to you.
Okay.
Yeah, unmute.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Julie Gossage.
Mayor Beckmeyer, before we entertain motions, um, can we have public comment on this item?
You're so right. Please, Mr. Montemayor, if you are available.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. Oh, never mind. Sue DeGry. And called by Kathy Mueller.
All right, please go ahead.
I can never figure out that hand up or down. Um, yes, I'd like to put a word in for Joanne Arnos for Open Space. Because she's been there a long time, which is good. You need some historical perspective, and these are hard times. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Our next speaker is Kathy. You may now unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Kathy Mueller, and I'm applying for the beaches. And I was not able to make the last meeting, but I still want to be considered for, uh, that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We have no more hands raised at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna close public comment on that item, bring it back to council. And I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Julie Gossage to one partial term of the Beautification Advisory Committee to expire March twenty twenty three.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Beckmeyer to appoint Julie Gossage to the position on Beautification Advisory Committee with a second by Vaterloss. Uh, call the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Um, I'll abstain. I don't know Julie.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that, uh, motion passes with, uh, four in favor and one abstained. And that, uh, that appoints Julie Gossage to the partial term for Beautification Advisor Committee to expire March twenty twenty three.
Okay, then moving on. In our packet, the next one is Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee.
Are we nominating as a group here? There are three in Open Space?
There are three full four-year terms. I don't think we have to nominate as a group per se. I think a motion can be made.
Well, I'll nominate Julie Landsell. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate Julie Landsell, Pete Schumacher, and Joanne Arnos.
I'll second.
Hey, with the motion to appoint Joanne Arno, Julie Landsell, Pete Schumacher, and Joanne Arnos for the three, each of the three for full four-year terms to expire March twenty twenty five on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. Uh, second.
You said March. Do you mean May twenty twenty?
I'm sorry. Thank you. May twenty twenty five is the expiration date. Thank you. Uh, a second by Mayor Beckmeyer, uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes, I know all three of them, so, but yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
And that leaves us with, um, the Beautification Advisory Committee and Kathy Mueller is the sole.
The Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, Madam Mayor.
It's getting so late. I'm so tired. Pardon me. Let me restate. That leaves us with Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. We have one applicant, Kathy Mueller, and we were not able to interview her. Councilmember O'Neill wasn't the only one who wasn't able to interview her. That was, was all of us. And I would like to have council discuss that.
I would like to leave that position open, um, until our next interviews, which we are going to have interviews because someone just left economic development. So since we did not get to interview, we can interview her in the next round, my opinion.
And.
I see Councilmember Big Six head nodding. And Councilmember O'Neill, my guess was gonna abstain anyway on that one, am I right?
Yes, I was gonna abstain.
All right, so, uh, is that a motion? Do we need to?
So I, I move that we wait until the next round of interviews so that we can interview the candidates.
We don't need a motion. If the council just wants to move on, there's just no action to take.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes item fifteen, brings us to our final item for tonight's meeting, which is item sixteen, the League of Cities.
I just say one thing real quick, sorry. If you didn't get the position, please reapply. Because there's always open seats, so please keep checking.
Thank you. I don't know where I lost my page. There it is, sorry. Here it is. Uh, designate, item sixteen, the designation of voting delegate for League of California Cities Annual Conference. The recommended action is to designate a voting delegate and alternate who will attend the twenty twenty one League of Cities Cal, also known as CalCities, annual business meeting on Friday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And again, our city clerk Sarah Coffey is our staff, uh, contact on this one. Would you like to give us any background or discussion?
Yes, briefly, Mayor Beckmeyer and councilmembers, members of the public, Pacifica is a member of the League of California Cities, or CalCities. Uh, it's an association based in Sacramento that represents the interests of California cities to the state legislature and provides information on, uh, federal and state legislative and administrative affairs. Uh, League of California Cities, uh, has an annual conference. The annual conference this year will be held in person, uh, in Sacramento from September twenty second through September twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. At this, uh, annual conference, uh, they, uh, an annual business meeting is held on Friday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Um, and during the general assembly, uh, the, uh, the business meeting would consider resolutions scheduled to be held at that meeting, which the league membership will, uh, consider and take action on those resolutions that establish league policy. Uh, for this purpose, um, the League of California Cities is requesting a designation of a voting delegate and an alternate that will be present at the meeting, um, to represent the City of Pacifica, uh, to vote on these, uh, business items. With that, I invite your deliberation on, um, who, which council members you would like to choose as the voting delegate and alternate for this meeting.
Well, first question would be who's going? Gotta figure out where the camera is. Okay, so there's five of us going, okay.
I nominate, um, Mayor Beckmeyer to be the voting delegate.
I second that.
Oh, yeah.
I accept. I'm sorry.
We need an alternate.
And an alternate.
Alternate, can we amend or add to the nomination the alternate as well? Or do we need two separate ones?
You can do it in one.
Well, then I nominate Mayor Pro Tem Beer to be the alternate.
I second.
Thanks, Sue.
So I have a Councilmember Vaterloss nominated, uh, Mayor Beckmeyer as the voting delegate and the alternate as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beer. The voting delegate was seconded by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beer. An alternate seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer. Call the roll call vote, uh, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Do we not need public comment on this one?
Oh, I'm, thank you.
Everything. Thank you for reminding us. Let us check to see if we have hands.
I'm seeing no hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. So then we will close public comment, bring it back to council.
Okay, uh, calling the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And, uh, the nominations of Mayor Beckmeyer for the voting delegate and Mayor Pro Tem Beer as the alternate passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for hanging in there for this lovely meeting of six hours and twenty-two minutes.
And it's only eleven twenty-five.
Five, pardon me, five hours and twenty-two minutes.
She'd like it.
Just seems like six. With that, it's great to see you all, and I'm adjourning the meeting at eleven twenty-two.
Good night, everybody.
All right.
Bye.